Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this meeting order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Newton?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Hanna?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, now we will, City Council will recess to close session.
I forgot this isn't on the agenda.
Good item.
How long is that gonna take? We're gonna talk like an auctioneer?
Ten minutes time.
Okay, we're gonna talk like an auctioneer. What do we need to do?
I need to...
Move to crew that?
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, we will recess to close session.
I'm not sure what's going on.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll call this, resume this, reconvene the public session of the Norco City Council meeting and let the city attorney give his report from the closed session.
Yeah, the City Council considered in closed session that matter listed on the agenda, the performance evaluation of the city manager, as well as a litigation matter which was added as an urgency item, Stern versus Norco. And there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. Now, if you'll stand, we'll have the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Hoffman, followed by the invocation of Pastor Michelle Ehrenberg, the Word of Faith Fellowship.
Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year to you. I am Ashley Now from Cross Hill Church. Changed the name, thank you city, you got that taken care of for us. We got our permits, the sign's going up, and we have our relaunch party on February 2nd. You can find us by the DMV, come join us for that. Was that a commercial in invocation? Sorry. A new year, happy new year. New year always brings new beginnings and new opportunities, and in Isaiah 43 it says, "See, I am doing a new thing; now it springs up. Do you not perceive it? I am making a way in the wilderness and streams in the wasteland." And so I want to remind you that no matter what you face, God has a way through it. And whatever interesting opportunities come your way, the Lord will see you through them. Would you pray with me? Dear Lord, gracious Lord, thank you for the very fact that you make all things new. Your mercies are new every morning. We thank you for the opportunity to pray together here, to seek your presence, your guidance, and your blessings. Lord, I thank you for this council that you have called for this here. Thank you for Mayor Hanna, for Mayor Pro Tem Bash, for councilmembers Grunmeier, Hoffman, and Newton. Lord, I thank you for their wisdom, for their experience, their commitment to making a difference in this world and in this community. Father, I thank you for each one here tonight. I thank you that they took the time out of their busy days to come and be a part of something great. We thank you, Lord. We pray for your Holy Spirit to guide us all. We ask that each word, each thought, everything that comes out tonight would bring glory to you and would build community. We ask for your wisdom, your strength, your power. Make us strong and courageous to do what is right and just. Lord, would you bless this time tonight, bless this City Council meeting? And since I'm here at this appropriate moment, Lord, would you please bless Hank and Frank as they retire? Lord, give them health and happiness and joy and all that they seek in their new adventures. Lord, bless the city of Norco, Horsetown, USA, and God bless America. Amen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add an emergency agenda item to tonight's council meeting regarding a letter regarding SB 50 to Senator Roth.
Okay.
Motion to do that.
Are you making a motion?
I'm making a motion, yes.
We have a motion in a second. I'll let the clerk do the roll call there.
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeier?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, now we do that at the end of the meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda is business appreciation. And I'm gonna walk down there, I'll call up Chairman of the EDAC Committee, Patrick Malone, to join me down at the podium.
So, yeah, so Robert and Mac wanna come up here, please? So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we're here to assist Mayor, I'm here to assist Mayor Hanna with the presentation of this month's business appreciation, the Norco Lubin Toon. That was founded in the 60s, and about 20 years ago, Mac and his partner, Robert, acquired it and remodeled everything, and it's been happy ever since, right? So...
My pleasure to present this plaque to the Norco Lubin Toon for demonstrating the value of local ownership, investing in six streets, architectural western theme, and building a loyal clientele in Horsetown, USA. Gentlemen? Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you very much. Good evening. We much appreciate this town. Moved here about 20 years ago from East Anaheim Hills, and they used to have horses back in the 60s, and came over to this town and loved it. And I'm not looking back, I'm not looking to leave. Unless it gets really bad in California, I'm going to Texas. But for now, we love Norco, and we love everybody in Norco. We get along with everybody, and we're happy that we got this award. People acknowledge us, we're very honest at the shop. Say again, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next. I have a recognition, this is kind of a sad deal for some of us in the city. These guys are good friends and good workers, but the retirement of Animal Control Superintendent Frank Skag... Frankie, I've known you 20 years, I can't pronounce your name right. And Parks and Building Superintendent Hank Koch. You gentlemen come up, and I'll refer this as the Hank and Frank Show. Start out with Hank's, Hank Koch. He's been an employee, outstanding employee, for 18 years in the Parks and Rec Division, taking care of building and overseeing the outside workers. And he's a real dedicated person, a good person to work for. And Hank, gonna miss you, partner.
Absolutely, thank you, Winston.
Here's yours.
Appreciate it.
Frank? Yeah. Frank, I held his a little longer, he's been here longer. But the city of Norco proudly or hereby recognizes Frankie. And for 33 years of outstanding and dedicated service to residents of Norco, and November 1986 to December 2019. And I'll tell you about these two guys, I've dealt with them for a long time. They're real dedicated as one of the team leaders of the NART team. I could call Frankie anytime, day or night, get a response, get his help to go rescue an animal and everything, a real dedicated person. And the same with Hank. He is on the team, and call him anytime, day or night, and he was willing to come and help us. And gentlemen, we really appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys all wanna come down? Down here and get the picture made, will you? They're gonna fit in your moving van.
I can find a hole. Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
We all need to get...
No clumpers.
We need to get out there in the front, folks, for the photo.
We are still recruiting for both of those two positions, yeah, yeah. And we're...
Just wanna know who's gonna be harassing me about the animal control stuff?
Yeah, we've got... Two outside candidates. And all.
I'll say a word.
Be nice.
Always is. It's gross. Just to both of you, that Frank especially, with all your help with animal control and NART, and with you also, Hank, and like I said, you've been my buddy since day one, and I think it was 20 years ago when he was just a young, frail, clean-shaven boy, begging a previous council to, you know, help him with his first home. So, not only are we gonna miss you as employees, but as members of our community.
I appreciate it, thank you so much, sir.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you. You're not to shy. So, I just wanna say real quickly, it's been my honor and privilege to work for the city of Norco. I was raised in Norco, raised my family in Norco. They all graduated from the Norco schools, and I'm just blessed to be able to stay here in Norco for at least the next few years before I possibly move somewhere else. But I'll be around, I'll be at City Hall, I'll be at the animal shelter still. Give it back, because that's, I think Norco's all about, is about volunteerism and giving back to the community. Thank you all.
I wanna thank you also individually, but also the city. I mean, years ago, when, in 2001, when we came to the United States from the Netherlands, and I never expected to be hired by the city, but hey, you guys were crazy enough to do it. But I loved every bit of it, and yeah, ups and downs, a roller coaster, work is always, life is like it, but there is no better place than Norco, and I wanna thank you all for that. Appreciate it.
I have one more. I have one more introduction here. Mona, I'll probably butcher your name, I hope not. Mona McLough, the new owner of Miss Norco and Corona Pageant, Gary and Arlene Lewis, would you come up and introduce her to the folks in the city, please?
Yeah.
So, I'll just say a few things. First of all, this is a very, whoa, whoa, whoa. Can you hear me? I'll let her say her first and her last name, because I'll murder the last name, too.
You said it pretty well. Good evening, my name's Mona McLough, and very happy to be here tonight, and I'm so excited to be taking over, although I have some pretty big shoes to fill. These two ran the Miss Norco Pageant in recent years and did an amazing job. The Miss Norco Pageant, as you can see, represented by our ladies here tonight, recognizes beautiful and intelligent young ladies who go out in their year rein and do community service in their prospective cities and beyond. And they've been involved in so much community service and volunteer work, and they've attended city functions. And that's all from what Gary and Arlene had started, and so I hope I can do half the job that they did, but I am so, so excited to be taking over this new venture, and I thank the city of Norco for welcoming us and everything that you have done for these girls and for the Miss Norco Pageant. Thanks for having us tonight.
No, I just, and I just wanted to thank City Council, city manager, all the professional staff that's here, that have backed us and supported us these years. And this year, since we had our pageant at the end of August, I know that we have attended more than 85 events. So, it's a pretty, pretty busy year for our girls, and no one said it better than, I think it was Frank, it's all about volunteerism and having that sincere desire, and to have that at the young age, and to teach them to give back to the community is an awesome, awesome feeling. So, we thank everyone, and we're not leaving as yet, we'll still be in the area, and we'll still be attending events.
Say a few things. We started this adventure when I saw the, on Pumpkin Rock, it said, "Bring back Miss Norco," and Gary had retired from the police department, and I had went to him right away, and I said, "What do you think if we bring it back?" And he said, "Yes," and I, right away, went and started doing the process, because, one, I was shocked he said, "Yes." And I knew if I didn't start it right away, he would've just, you know, went backwards. Anyways, we went through a lot, and you all know what we went through. I grew up in Norco, I've been here since 1968. Grandma owned a restaurant called Trina's Mexican Food. Rode my horses just like everybody else, except we didn't pay for the insurance on the horses, you didn't have to have the best of the best. Rode my horse to Pete Liquor, remember Pete's Liquor? Yes, rode my horse there, bottom of Chunky Bar and a Coke, but the vet said, "Don't do that no more." Anyways, long story short, I just wanna say thank you so much. We are passing the reins over to Miss Mona, and we hope that she will continue to do everything that we have done. So, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Ladies.
Come on over, and it's all getting...
Come over here, pretend like you like me.
Little ones in front?
Little ones in front?
Come here, baby.
Watch that crown, girl.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin will still be around.
For a little bit.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll go into the City Council Communications, reports on regional boards and commissions, and we'll start off with Mayor Pro Tem Bash.
Went to a lot of meetings, the two, I think the key one, which I don't think I put on there, is we had the advisory committee for Norco College, and they're really looking to pass that bond. I'm actually gonna support it, because I'm concerned about the, I'm very, very concerned with the fact that they're looking at a huge unemployment in Riverside County, some people say as high as 50% due to the $15 an hour in automation, and so I'm very concerned that people will not have a way to train for new jobs. Right now, the opportunities are a very expensive private school, the sort of, the different ones in these big office buildings, and then you've got your community college system. So, because they're beefing up that sort of work level retraining, retooling of workers, I'm gonna be supporting that bond. I don't know what's gonna happen, they literally vote on it in six weeks. I'm not real happy with a lot of things going on with the district, but I really do feel that we need to make sure that people, when these robots take over, have an opportunity to find a way to get a job. And then, the Navy rebuttal goes on. We met with an architectural historian that was very interesting. Right now, between Bill Wolkman and I, we got about 300 hours in work on replying to an 18-page letter, and so I'll keep you guys posted on that. And by the way, today, the mayor was excellent at the Norco Chamber of Commerce meeting. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I even learned a bunch of stuff. That's all I have, thank you.
So, since the last meeting, you can see what I've done up there, mostly finishing up, guest speaking at a couple of community meetings, and that's it.
That's a new format. I've been busy, like as ever, what I have up there, but I just wanna, my most important thing is to remind people that on January 27th, we're gonna have a person from the Western Community Energy at our Town Hall meeting, and our launch date for that is coming up soon, and we are projecting a 2% saving on your electric bill. So, it's a good idea to come in and find about how you belong to the WCE, which is gonna start here in April. So, please come to our January 27th meeting so you can actually ask your questions. Then, yesterday, I attended the meeting at the California Rehabilitation Center at the prison, and they are out, probably over their maximum, they have 3,600 inmates there. We've heard rumors for years, just like I heard them, just like the rest of you, oh, they're gonna close it down, gonna close it down, gonna close it down. Well, if they're gonna close it down, they're investing a lot of money into it right now, so probably for at least the next year, it's gonna be there. They have a new associate warden, deputy warden, the current warden, Cynthia Tamkins, is projected to retire in December of this year, and so several new people are gonna come in and try to take over her position. But they have new staff, big staff changeover because of that, a lot of retirees out there. But they are, the state is spending the new medical unit, along with some new housing unit there. So, at this point, it doesn't look like they're gonna close, so what have you read in the paper, you hear in the news, there are rumors, but again, it's the state, so they do things impulsively, too. So, just depends what side, where the wind is blowing, what they do with that place. But at this point, it doesn't look like it's going anywhere. Thank you.
Good evening. I did wanna make one comment about the Hall of Fame ceremony on Saturday night, that Kevin, you did a great job as the master of ceremonies, and...
He was a horse, though.
Mr. Ed, just... Yeah, I know. So, you did a good job, Kevin, and it was very well attended. Last Thursday, I attended the special board meeting for the Chino Basin Desalter, and just a quick update, and it's probably more of a, to help us with traffic, we have approximately a $27 million raw water pipeline project that is running from, in East Vale, Yerupa Valley. It's running from Archibald all the way down Belgrave, under the bridge on the 15 freeway, and then all the way up to Wineville. So, you may see that, may have some traffic impacts. Completions, hopefully, is gonna be in May and June of this year, but we'll see how that shakes out. And then the other is just an informational item that, I don't know if anyone's noticed, when you cross the bridge on Hamner Avenue and look down to the Silver Lake's first parking area, you're gonna see a small leakage that's a pretty good size, and the water line that we ran underneath the river, where it makes a transition from steel pipe to plastic pipe, basically, it's a 30-inch water line, the gasket is failing, and so that, we tried tightening up all the bolts and that, and it's not, it has to be replaced. So, that will be coordinated with Chad and Public Works to shut down that water line and repair it before it becomes a really big geyser in the air, and then you will notice it. Chad, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Last week, we toured the New Wood Springs Suites Hotel, and that's quite a hotel over there, it's for people that need extended stay, like are working jobs in the area for more than one day and everything. We had the NART training, and I don't know if you know or not, but we got a MOU with the County of Riverside, where we can work with the Riverside County Animal Services. If they need us to come help them, we can go over there, if we need more help, we can call them, but they're coming to training, and last week, we had 18 of those from the county animal thing at our training, so they're all interested in coming. Monday, I attended the League of California Cities in San Jacinto with the rest of the council people here. And on, I think it was the 29th of December, Sunday, NART, we stood by at the Equafest over at Burbank, the LA Equestrian Center, with our horse ambulance. That's where all the horses in the Rose Parade have to come and participate that day, and they're actually on RFD TV. It's quite a, quite a deal, we get to see all the horses and riders and carriages and things up, up close, and we'll let video play there. Here comes America's number one hitch, I call them. Can y'all recognize them there? That's the Budweiser team, Budweiser Clydesdale, they're going out into the arena to do their performance, and they put on quite a bit of, quite a show in there with that. And then on New Year's Day, we stood by at the Rose Parade, we're parked on top of a bridge on Del Mar, on top of a freeway there, where the freeway's blocked off underneath there, is where all the horses are staged overnight to come into the parade. We had to be there on that bridge no later than 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and it's nice and chilly there. But this year, we didn't have any incidents. Got the next slide there. Here's a, where we're standing, there's a vacant lot, the horses ride across, they ride up the ramp coming off that freeway, and they ride up across this bridge. steel pipe to plastic pipe, basically, it's a 30-inch water line, the gasket is failing. And so that, we tried tightening up all the bolts and that, and it's not, it has to be replaced. So that will be coordinated with Chad and Public Works to shut down that water line and repair it before it becomes a really big geyser in the air, and then you will notice it. Chad, did you have anything to add to that? Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Last week, we toured the New Wood Springs Suites Hotel, and that's quite a hotel over there. It's for people that need extended stay, like are working jobs in the area for more than one day and everything. We had the NART training, and I don't know if you know or not, but we got a MOU with the County of Riverside where we can work with the Riverside County Animal Services. If they need us to come help them, we can go over there. If we need more help, we can call them, but they're coming to training. Last week, we had 18 of those from the county animal thing at our training, so they're all interested in coming. Monday, I attended the League of California Cities in San Jacinto with the rest of the council people here. And on, I think it was the 29th of December, Sunday, NART, we stood by at the Equafest over at Burbank, the LA Equestrian Center with our horse ambulance. That's where all the horses in the Rose Parade have to come and participate that day, and they're actually on RFD TV. It's quite a deal. We get to see all the horses and riders and carriages and things up close, and we let video play there. Here comes America's number-one hitch, I'd call them. Can y'all recognize them there? That's the Budweiser team, Budweiser Clydesdale. They're going out into the arena to do their performance, and they put on quite a bit of, quite a show in there with that. And then on New Year's Day, we stood by at the Rose Parade. We're parked on top of a bridge on Del Mar, on top of a freeway there, where the freeway's blocked off underneath there, is where all the horses are staged overnight to come into the parade. We had to be there on that bridge no later than 5:00, 5:30 in the morning, and it's nice and chilly there. But this year, we didn't have any incidents. Got the next slide there. Here's a, where we're standing, there's a vacant lot, the horses ride across, they ride up the ramp coming off that freeway, and they ride up across this bridge, come by us, and they go into a vacant lot, and they go down there about two blocks, and they get in their lineup period. And the reason I like being parked here is like where I was standing at Equafest up above everything, myself and Buzz, we take note of all the horses that are acting up, that are nervous. Now, there goes the marine color guard on their Mustangs, they're always a big attraction and everything, but these horses all start coming by us just little after daylight going to line up. But we stand there and make notes of the nervous horses at Equafest, because they're probably going to be nervous at the parade if they're nervous there. And then we check them again on Parade Day, and same five horses that was nervous at Equafest, was nervous at the parade when they come by us, but they were all good in the parade. Last year, we had to pick two of them up and take them to the end of the parade because they couldn't get them, get them down the street, because I think they were placed right in front of a band or something. But we had to haul them almost from the beginning to the end, and we had to go along towards the end of the parade in case something else happened. So we was along there for about, what, two hours, Ted? Ted and Buzz was in the back of the trailer holding these guys. But anyway, we do that, it's a lot of fun. And then Vector, they're continuing spraying the areas for West Nile. West Nile's bad right now, and it's going to get worse when it warms up because of all the rains and the mosquitoes. So be sure and prepare your animals for the disease. RTA is maintaining its ridership, and right now, we're conducting a study on how to prepare for the upcoming requirements on how to switch out all the buses to battery-operated buses, which I think they have to have the whole fleet done by 2030. And those buses cost about a million bucks apiece, so we don't know what's going to happen there. And one more thing on RTA, didn't put it down there, but we have a new route coming in, Route 4, it will start over at Costco, Amazon Center in Eastvale, and it'll come down to Limoneite, come down to Archibald, come down to Norco, and then to Corona. So it's going to make access for people to be able to take the bus and go like from Corona, Norco, go over to the Costco area. I think they have a Smart and Final, they're talking about putting in a Walmart over there so people could ride the bus and go shopping over there. And the construction on the 91, I mean, on the 15 freeway express lanes, projects moving right along. And that's all I have. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is the City Council Consent Items. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to sponsor any action by, or to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items from the consent calendar will be considered separately under Item 3. So do we have any, anybody want to pull any items?
Pull C and G, please.
G, did you say?
Yes, G's in George.
Okay, anymore? Okay, do we have?
Move to approve the rest.
Wait just a second. Do we have any speaker cards from the audience?
There are no speaker cards.
Okay, so then we'll accept a motion.
Second.
Have a motion to approve the rest of the items.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, Item C, acceptance of the Hamner widening project from 3rd to 5th Street. Who pulled that?
I did.
Ted?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, I really, I don't have to complain about the project, but I do want to probably stress to Chad and his crew, and we really need to work on the improvement on that 15-Hamner corner of the, that would be the southwest corner. I know that you didn't get permission or the easement granted and things like that, but over the next couple of years, we need to either talk to the property owners in there, that, for the residents to know, we did not improve that because we didn't get approval from the property owners there to improve that corner, right in front of the old tuna masters and the restaurant. It really creates a traffic bog there. I know that once the hotel goes in there, it will, hopefully on the other side, that corner will be fixed. But I appreciate what you guys did there, but we really need to work on that for future to make sure that part of that section is, it just, it doesn't flow well through there. That was just all I had to comment on. Thank you.
I have a question on that same item, Chad. The section of street from 4th going north towards the animal hospital, did we not get right away on that to widen that area there, that one little arm that sticks out?
No, we were having a lot of difficulty getting consistent meetings or even dialogue with the owner. There's actually three parcels there. We have one of them, the other two, we just couldn't get anything moving with the property owner. Plus, there's also the Edison power lines that are there, would have to be adjusted. We also determined that would be about a quarter million dollars to adjust those poles down, because they're up on an elevated hill. So that was also a financial issue that we would have also had to resolve, but we couldn't even get the property in the first place, but we tried.
Okay, and then the other end of it, down there by 5th Street, where the Holiday Inn Express is going to go, that'll be fixed by them, is that correct?
Correct. They'll do improvements on the Hamner side and the 5th Street side.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had. All right, Ted, did you want to make a motion?
Ted, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. Item D, installation of electric vehicle charging station at City Hall parking lot, is that yours, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Roger, since Brian's not here, are you handling this?
I'll do my best.
You always do. Fairly simple. So, one, I want to compliment you, Brian, on moving forward with these chargers at City I guess one of my first questions was on these proposals, when did you change the spelling on your name? So...
I put the D?
Yeah, and they both was a swing and a miss. I wanted to compliment you and Brian on these proposals and how you went through them, because it's always a concern to me when a contractor gives you eight items as included and 17 items that are excluded. That's always a flag. But my basic question that I couldn't find an answer to was, who pays for the electricity? How is that reimbursed, since the system's going to be tied to our electrical system? And where does that, is that money reimbursable, and where does it come from?
Yes, it'll be on a separate meter. It's charged at a lower rate than what they charge for City Hall, excuse me, or other facilities, other city facilities. And then we are reimbursed through the usage of these chargers. So everybody that uses these chargers, it's a network called ChargePoint. They have 100,000 chargers across the country, around the world, actually. And so, let's say you're driving up the 15 from Temecula, you know, to Vegas, you need to get a charge. You check your app, you see there's one in Norco at City Hall, you can pull in, and for that 45 minutes that it takes to get a full charge, you are charged a fee that is, much of it is passed on to the city. Each charger is anticipated at normal usage to generate about $500 a month. So over the course of five years, we recoup our entire matching funds.
Okay.
So, and beyond that, it becomes a profit center.
And then this ChargePoint, then they, like monthly or whatever, we're paying Edison?
Correct.
And then we're reimbursed, is that automatic, or do we have to have somebody send them the bill and all of that?
No, it becomes automatic.
Okay, all right. So that was my big point, where was the reimbursable coming from? But a good job, it's well needed.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it's a, at the expense of three parking spaces, it's a good investment.
It's a good start. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. G, also yours, Greg?
No, sir.
No, that was mine.
Ted, okay.
Yeah, the reason I pulled that, this is the last and final extension on the property, and I know that staff and along with some council members have been working very hard trying to figure out, and I just want to continue, Steve, yours, and Roger, and Chad's, and the staff's worked diligently with the Dolopies and management. We need to figure out what to do with it. I mean, it's, I know, they're back here in the back, and I don't know if they want to say anything, but it's one of those things that, this is a crucial property that we have on our track map, and we want to ensure and protect what we have here in Norco along with their investment. So, unless they want to speak, it's up to the council, to the mayor, if he doesn't mind.
No, come on up.
Oh, well, thanks, and appreciate the comment, Councilperson Hoffman, and we'd like to try to get our project developed. Obviously, we've met with most of the council at this point in time, and we're trying to find solutions. You know, just the way the project's designed, half-acre lots are expensive to develop, and there's access issues, and there's frontage issues, as everybody knows. So we're, I think everyone's been helpful, Chad, Steve, and everyone that's been involved in the process, trying to find solutions. And so we'll keep working at that. We know this is our last extension, and if we can't figure something out here this year to kick it off, then we're going to, we'll lose our entitlement and kind of start over with something. So we're open to continue to work and try to figure out how we can get the project going.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ted, do you want to make a?
Yeah, with that, if no one else said comment, make a motion to approve the...
Have a motion and a second.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. All right, Item 4 is public comments. This is the time when persons in the audience wishing to address the City Council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits City Council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The City Council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. Do we have any cards?
Yes, first speaker card is Bill Naylor.
Mr. Mayor and council, in keeping with the theme of earlier of volunteerism, I thought I would take just a minute to thank a number of people and groups for their assistance. First of all, I'd like to thank Chad for letting us know that they were going to be removing the chain, or the trail fencing along Ped Land. If we needed, wanted any of the materials, that we would be able to go do that. We were able to assemble about 15 volunteers this last Saturday, members both from Grace Fellowship, Norco Horsemen's Association, and just general public at large, and we were able to retrieve somewhere in the area of about 100 posts and 200 rails, and they are almost all usable. So we have those stored, and we probably have enough work, or enough materials now for the next two or three years to make repairs. I know just in those last few days, we've noticed that there was at least three rails that we had to replace, and we went, already gone out and done that on 6th Street, Valleyview, and on 3rd Street. I kind of want to thank all those groups that did help us with that. Also, in keeping with the volunteerism, I know that a number of people did volunteer to help with the Christmas festival that we had up at Nellie Weaver and Ingalls, and that was a fantastic program with a parade and the event, and a lot of volunteers were worked on that. So again, I'd like to thank them for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Good evening, council. I would like to invite all of you on March 14th to Norco Horsemen's Casino Night. It's March 14th, Saturday, at Nellie Weaver Hall. This is our annual fundraiser to raise money for scholarships for high school students. Last year, we were able to give eight $1,000 scholarships to graduating seniors, and so I hope we can do as well this year, but it depends on, obviously, people coming to the event and helping us sponsor it. So I hope that's on everybody's calendar. And also, tomorrow night is our monthly Norco Horsemen's Association meeting, and our mayor Hannah is our speaker, so if you want to hear him speak again tomorrow night, it's your opportunity. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
There are no further speaker cards.
Thank you, everybody that spoke. All right, Item 5 is legislative matters, and no new evidence will be heard from the public at the, as the public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. City Attorney.
No. Just need a motion?
Just need a motion then.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, we'll have to take a verbal call for this one. Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hannah?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Item 6 is City Council Discussion Items. Order of Presentation for Discussion Items. The staff report presentation, council questions of staff and applicant, public speakers in favor, against, and neutral, and council discussion and action. Item A is Report on Fiscal Year 2019 Audited Financial Reports from the Acting Finance Director. Was that?
Hi, good evening. We have here our, to receive and file our fiscal year 2019 audited financial reports. We have Mr. Rob Callanan to give a quick presentation on them.
City Council, my name is Bob Callanan, I'm with White Nelson D. Evans. We were the audit firm who perform audit services on your city's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2019. Just brief outline, it looks long, but I won't make it long, because I know you have other important things to discuss as well, but briefly go over the scope of services, what our audit opinion was, my required communications that I'm obligated to share with you under the auditing standards, and then finally, a brief synopsis on upcoming GASB standards. GASB standards, GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, uh, that will impact your financial reporting in the future. The scope of services basically was to do an audit of your financial statements in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and, as well as governmental audit standards. We did an agreed upon procedures review of the city's GAN limit, that's the appropriations limit that is adopted annually. Uh, we, we were, uh, tasked with doing a single audit of the city's federal programs, but we did not have to do that this year because there's a threshold of 750,000 in expenditures, and if you don't go above that, there's not a requirement to file a single audit. So, just wanted to make you aware that that was in the original scope of services, but the expenditure level which we did look at and verify did not give rise to the need for a single audit. And then lastly, uh, we had a new item in the scope of services this year, was an audit of the Measure R annual financial statements because the city did start to receive some Measure R funding during the year. Our auditor's opinion is for the year ended June 30th, 2019, just point out that management is responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statements, and our responsibility is to express opinions on those financial statements. And opinions is plural because if you look at the financial statements, there are several columns, and each column essentially, I'm giving an opinion on each separate column, and then everything as a whole. So, that just gives you a little lower layer of materiality in, in looking at things. And then, uh, we're required to plan and perform the audit to make sure that the numbers before you that are in that financial statements and the footnote disclosures are fairly stated and there, there's no material misstatements in there. So, our audit opinion was an unmodified opinions for June 30th, 2019, that's the highest form of opinion that can be provided under the, under the auditing standards. So, they call it a clean opinion, a lot of people will say clean opinion. We also, as part of this, of the governmental auditing standards are required to report if there were any material weaknesses or material non-compliance matters that, uh, we came across during the course of our audit, and I'm pleased to report that we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control, and we did not come across any material non-compliance Want to point out that we do annually send an engagement letter to management and it essentially communicates the scope of services that I laid out before you, as well as some planning letter to get some more information as to how to go about our audit, because it is risk-based approach, so it changes from year to year. We have standard audit procedures that we do every year, like I audit, our firm audits 100% of cash and investments every year, no matter what, but there's other areas that, you know, just depending on facts and circumstances for a given year, may give rise to doing some more audit procedures in a, in an area that may not have happened in another year. Management is responsible for the selective, selection and use of accounting policies and the significant accounting policies in the financial statement notes, footnote one, that's where you will find those significant accounting policies. Uh, want to point out that those policies during the course of our audit did not change from prior years, it was consistent from one year to the next, and there was no implementation of any new auditing standards or auditing requirements for June 30th, 2019. Want to point out that the financial statements do contain significant estimates, I've listed them on this PowerPoint presentation, uh, I think the key ones are, the ones that have the, the most impact have to do with the net pension liabilities related to the Calpers' defined benefit plans, as well as the city's other post-employment benefit plan. Those have some extended footnote disclosures in the notes that can give you some more information as how those estimates were derived, and, uh, just be aware that, uh, subsequent to my issuing the report, there were no major changes, uh, that need to come to your attention related to those. These disclosures, as I said, note five is your net pension liability related to Calpers' defined benefit plans, note 12 is the OPEB plans, and then obviously, 11, risk management has to do with your general liability and workers' comp estimates. I'm pleased to report that we had no difficulties in performing our audit. Uh, we did have a few audit adjustments and management agreed to record them. None of those adjustments, uh, either individually or in the aggregate, were material to the financial statements. Uh, we had no disagreements with management's on any, uh, issues or matters. Uh, we do obtain a representation letter from management to, that essentially says that they've, uh, provided us, uh, unfettered access to anything we needed, any employees we needed to talk to in order for us to perform our auditing services. And to our knowledge, I have to, to inform you if I believe there's opinion shopping going on, and I'm pleased to report there was no opinion shopping going on, because there was no issues that we disagreed on. New standards coming, uh, there were implementations in 18, uh, fiscal year 1819, I misspoke earlier, I said there was no standards, there were a couple, uh, they were very minor in relationship, the, the matter of fact, GASB statement 83 did not apply to the city, but I just wanted to make you aware that it was implemented, implemented because it could in the future impact the city's reporting if you have the, uh, requirements for that. And GASB 88 really was some, uh, language changing and a few additional note disclosures related to the long-term debt, uh, of the city, and so it was just changing up the footnote with wording a little bit primarily. So, very minor, I didn't feel it was significant enough to warrant, uh, an emphasis of matter in my audit opinion. And then down the road, 18, uh, for fiscal year 1920, uh, the big one is going to be the fiduciary activities. Uh, you have before you in the financial statements, a section in the front called fiduciary funds, and there will be a new requirement to add a, uh, additional statement in there on the fiduciary funds that will show additions and deletions to every fiduciary fund that's in there, an agency fund. That currently, right now, just shows you a, a balance sheet of what the agency funds are. It also requires the, the city management to go through the, uh, what's existing in the agency fund and the fiduciary funds to make sure that it's truly assets and liabilities related to entities outside the city of Norco itself, meaning that they, there's no own source revenue in there that needs to be reported in the city, that it's truly the, uh, city acting in a fiduciary capacity for other organizations and, and so forth. So, that's going to take some, uh, time from management to, to check to see, yes, everything is there, is fine. Uh, I also am on a state committee, uh, Governmental Accounting and Auditing Committee, and we're trying to issue a white paper to supplement the standard for California entities, and we are struggling with some of the language in the GASB standard as it relates to whether we need to be reporting in there, the pen, uh, as pension trust funds related to the OPEB, uh, plan that you have and possibly the pension funds. So, it's, uh, it's not as clear going through the wording, and we're still working on that and hope to have that white paper out in the next couple of months to help, uh, municipalities and other special districts be able to comply appropriately with the note disclosure requirements. So, with that, I'd just open it up if you had any questions for me related to the, the audit, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Council have any questions? Looked like you got off easy.
I keep, I keep mentioning that I'm going to come and wear my bolo ties, because I
do own three, and I will, I'll dispense with the hat because I'm not appropriately dressed in cowboy, my cowboy boots and my jeans, but this is my third council meeting in three nights, so it's the end, the end of the road for this week. So, I apologize for not having a bolo tie on to represent horsetown and, uh, my wife's a, 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 a former horseman, horse showman, uh, from Grand Rapids, Michigan and Indiana, and unfortunately, we couldn't bring our horse out here, uh, at the time, so I'm hoping, uh, now that the kids are out of the house, that we, uh, start going for some more, uh, area where I can do some golfing and she can do some, some horsemanship.
Well, it's okay to wear your hat with bikinis or whatever.
No, no, that would not be a good sight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, make a couple of comments?
Yes, sir.
For you, receive and file this document.
Yes, sir.
First and foremost, I do want to, uh, thank, thank the auditors for their work and their timely advice to city staff, uh, with respect to, uh, the audit. But most importantly, I do want to thank, uh, the finance staff, Lysette and her team, uh, for compiling all the financial statements. Uh, this is a, uh, truly a year-long process, and I also want to express my gratitude to the rest of staff because they are also involved in that process. And for those in the audience, I do want to bring to your attention the city's actual financial statements. Uh, what the auditor has presented here is the, uh, the obligations under the audit, uh, the actual document that presents information with respect to the city's, uh, financial operations as well as financial condition as of June 30th, 2019. Uh, content in this, uh, comprehensive annual financial report, uh, is available on the city website, and it contains a lot of information, uh, with respect to city funds and accounts. Uh, I encourage you to read it, these are not your typical budget, this is not a budget document. I know a lot of people are interested in reading, reading budget documents, but the actual information in terms of where the city stands financially at the end of every, every fiscal year, uh, is contained in this document, so it is an important document. And to assist you with the understanding of the numbers in the document, we have, uh, included, uh, notes, we have, uh, included, uh, management discussions and, and analysis pertaining to the financial statement, as well as transmittal, again, a very important document, uh, is on the city website, I encourage you to, to read it. And the city council, we appreciate your support in, in making this happen as well.
No problems, anybody else got anything to say?
Mayor, I'd just like to comment, uh, reiterate what the, uh, city manager said, and whenever I was reading through this and I saw the, I highlighted the, all the sections in there, and I, this is a compliment to, uh, Lysette and her team. Uh, no exceptions are noted as a result of performing this procedure from the auditor. That means a lot, uh, because especially when this auditor's report says no material weaknesses were identified and no material non-compliance was identified. Uh, that means that this city's financial, uh, officers and, uh, people and staff are doing a good job, and, uh, it's a credit to, and to your direction along with Lysette and your team, so, thank you, thank you very much.
And we do appreciate everything you guys do with our Lysettes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we need a motion in a second. Right.
I have a motion to receive and file.
All right, please vote.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Item B is reservoir number one, replacement initial study and propose mitigated negative declaration. This is a combination between the planning director and the public, uh, works director, who wants to be first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a project that's already part of the CIP and has been funded and obviously approved by the city council. One of the, one of the items that's required is an environmental analysis and determination, uh, a mitigated, or an, an, excuse me, an initial study was prepared, and the conclusion was that a mitigated negative declaration be adopted. So, that's the action before the city council tonight to adopt the mitigated negative declaration. The only potential issues that were identified, um, there was no indication of any impact onsite, uh, there were, there was only potential impact to, uh, birds and, uh, if, if construction occurred during the nesting season, which is September to, I forget what it is, September to March, or, and there's adequate mitigation measures in there to protect those species should they be, should construction occur within those time periods. And the only other potential impact was the potential to find archaeological, um, things on the property once grading starts. They didn't find any, any indication that there were any there because of the disturbed nature of the property, but there, there is a condition that will protect those resources should they be found. And based upon those and the rest of the, the analysis, the determination was that a mitigated negative declaration be adopted. And with that, I'll conclude and let Chad say something.
And just to clarify for that project, it's already an existing reservoir up on the hill, uh, it's on a, basically a granite hill, um, but they're going to basically, um, demolish that reservoir, regrade it basically about a foot or two, um, to, to re, uh, reestablish the site, and then build a larger reservoir onsite, it's more wider capacity, so going from 2 million to 3 million gallons to give us more storage. So, that's why, as far as the mitigated, they don't expect any issues because it's already a developed location. Uh, but it still will require, um, a tribal monitor, um, because that's under, uh, the laws, they have submitted a note indicating they want to be present during the grading period, and that's the only time they're supposed to be present, uh, to see if anything is discovered or disturbed, so we will have an agreement with the, uh, local tribe to, send a representative to basically stand and monitor and watch the grading to see if any, um, historical archaeological things are discovered, but we don't expect that since that location is just a rock. But we are obliged to do that by state law.
Thank you. Questions up here, anyone?
What year was that built? Why is it called number one?
I believe those were in the 50s.
Would have been after 57. That wasn't the first one though, was it?
Eh, well, I don't know if it's the first one with its label, there was two that were built.
The one over here by the Mormon church.
There was two that were built around the same time, I think it was 57 or 58, sometime around there.
Yeah, the Camby Community Services District, so it's over 50 years old.
Yeah, well.
So, it's historic in and of itself.
Oh, go on.
Okay, I'm just kidding.
Want to hear a motion put on the register?
Any more questions?
Yes, I have one for, uh, Chad, this is the, the, uh, the tank by the Wiley property, correct?
Correct.
There's no problems with the Wiley property and contamination when you're grading or anything like that, it should not affect that?
No, because we're just grading the same existing pad where the reservoir sits now.
Because it's not going to, there is a plume that goes down there, I just don't want to go, we're not going to be touching that area, correct?
We're not even entering any Wiley property.
No, but the plume goes beyond the Wiley property that's going there, okay. Well, yeah, it's on the hill, but if you go down towards El Paso where that, that wa, where the, uh, as you go down with that, uh, repairing areas, we're not even touching that, right?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question, Ber.
Greg?
Couple of parts to this, is, um, Steve, if you recall, this is years ago, on that tank, our former, uh, former planning commissioner, Jim Mercer, okay? And Kevin, you know him.
Yeah, you will.
All right.
Run half of a horse.
That, yeah, if, if you, if you lease half of a pony, you can run for counsel, so, um, but if you remember, he had access, he had granted us some type of access off of his property, and he, he played us pretty well to, to go up to this well, all right? So, and, and the reservoir, and there, and, and work was being done at, at that time. You kind of remember that from forever ago? So, I'm trying to get around to, why do we have to have a tribal monitor on this? Okay, because that would have been taken care of a long time ago. What's the trigger on, how many yards are you moving? What area of excavation is triggering that cost? To have that monitored when we're going to be paying $1,000 a day for that guy to sit out there and do absolutely zero?
Yeah, unfortunately, the trigger is that we have to do an AV-52 consultation if we're doing anything within the, the historical range of the tribes that lay claim to Southern California, uh, and if they request it, they get it, that's, it's the bottom line.
But there's something else, I mean, but you don't have to do that on every project or size, there's something that triggers that, whether it's...
It's really the grading. If we're disturbing the site, if we were, for example, taking the reservoir down and building it on existing surface without any grading, disturbing of the area, uh, my understanding is we wouldn't, I'll be obligated to provide, um, a request, uh, for monitoring. It's really because of the grading that's occurring, um, is why they want to make sure that if there's anything disturbed and, and sacred on that location, uh, that they have a monitor there. And it's pretty much, almost on every project now, they're, they're putting in, when we do the AV-52 notifications, we come back with at least one request to have a monitor onsite.
What tribe is it?
Yeah, the Ipachanga Tribe.
I had to have three here recently. So that's why aggravated with it.
Right. We send them out to all of them so far consistently. We've usually only got them from the, I can't even say, the Lusano?
Yeah.
The Ipachanga, I know Ipachanga, that reference.
I just didn't think this is a big enough area to trigger that.
Yeah, it's really just about excavation and now it's a requirement because of this type of project. We have to do the analysis and it's part of the environmental review. Because of the environmental, it's required to determine if you can have a mitigated deck, you have to do notifications to the tribes and they have that ability to request it.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, go ahead.
So about 10 years ago, what happened is when they built in the hills, they plowed under a whole bunch of Indian artifacts because they said it was just a pass-through area. And so Ginny Osterman, myself and some people notified the Lusano Indians that just down the hill from that is actually a former, not as big as the Tomeskal site down by Glen Ivy, but there was a village that was identified by the Southwest Museum back in the 40s. And so I think that may have triggered it. And now the Lusanos, because what happened is so many developers did negative declarations. I mean, you were here, not that you were part of it, but they plowed under a whole bunch of stuff up in those hills and there's still, there's eight sites left up there that they've, that we've mapped. One was just destroyed, so they're very, very, I don't know if this triggered it, but I do know they're aware of that site. I can't imagine though, because in the 50s, they just lopped, those two hills, they just lopped the tops off of them. But yeah, it's a good way to make money, you know? And I think it just went up to 1,500 bucks a day, didn't it? 1,500 now?
I don't even have the price yet.
Yeah, it's 1,580 or something. But that's why right down the hill was a major village, just literally at the bottom of that hill, so.
Okay, do we have any cards?
We have no speaker cards for this item.
Okay, bring it back to council. Does anybody else have any discussion about it? Or a motion?
To approve? Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you. Item C is reservoir eight and nine and booster station project, initial study and proposed mitigated negative declaration. Once again, it's a dual, planning director and public works director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is like a ditto report. Different site, it's at the corner of Bluff and River Road. And it's different in that these are two new reservoirs as opposed to replacement of an existing reservoir. Same issues were identified as potential impacts, although there was no evidence onsite that there would be an impact. So the initial study identified the potential for the impacts to both, again, nesting birds and sensitive species that have been identified for protection. None of those were found on the site, but mitigation measures have been added to protect those species should evidence be found and should construction occur within the nesting period that we talked about with the last one. And again, also the potential for finding archaeological resources. Once grading occurs, there are conditions in place to protect those resources. Consultation again is part of the project when grading begins. With those conditions, again, the conclusion of the initial study was that a mitigated negative declaration be adopted. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chad.
Yeah, and this site again is, while similar, it's definitely different in that it is a, for the majority, it's an undeveloped property, so it has a lot more potential, things that need to be mitigated, a lot of more just really initial temporary construction related mitigations that will be in place, you know, dust control and mitigation in that regards. But this one will because of the fact, and the consultant aired on the side of caution in it because it's, it clearly has been developed in part and there are existing wells that have been there in the past, you know, that were used long ago. So there has been some development, but not a true development, that there might be historical artifacts or items on the site. While they did an initial investigation, they, and we had, they did some excavation areas just to do tests, they didn't find anything other than one little item they found on the surface sitting there, which could have been transplanted because frankly, we use that site for all our spoils materials and we dump it there from all over the city. So, you know, so they decided because of that, it's certain you're going to have your tribal monitor, plus you're also required to hire and have onsite during just the grading portion, an archaeological monitor who will prepare a report regarding any and all findings or non-findings related to the site and they'll be filed and submitted to the city. And so in this particular one, we'll have two monitors, one that we're hiring, that's a certified archaeologist, and also the tribal monitor that'll be there also.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions or comments?
I have a comment. So up until a year ago, the three hoods that were there, those were actually places there by the Navy, those are actually Navy wells, and that was actually where the hot springs originated. And I can understand why the Lusanos except that they use that hot springs, but that area's been so, you read in the 1930s and 20s where people were digging up pottery and all kinds of stuff. It was a semi, semi-major village and they're not even certain it was Lusano, maybe San Gabrielanos. But is there anything left of those wells that maybe we could give to the historic? Because they kind of went down before I realized I would have liked to have gotten some photographs of them.
Well, one of them we currently use as a non-potable well, we fill a lake with it, so that one...
Do you have a hood, one of the old hoods still there?
Um, I don't think so. Most of it's been just retrofitted. We put our own infrastructure over it to protect it and secure it. We'd have to check to see if there's might be something on the ground out there, but most of the infrastructure above ground has all been knocked over and demolished.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, generally speaking, just so you know, that when you do water infrastructure, things like that, there are some sticklers, but the reality is Section 106, they really don't because those are things that are necessary to keep cities going and stuff. They're not generally considered historic. But if there's anything out there, valves or anything, because that is all original Navy stuff from 43, 44, when they hooked up to the wells. If there's just something out there, it might be fun to give to the, our historic archive room.
Okay, we'll take a look before any construction starts.
Yeah, I'm not, and trust me, I'm not saying dig around out there. And again, I think the village was more down, it was sort of protected by the hill, just on the other side. You know where the school is? We think the village was sort of right there and it was sort of a natural crossing to go across the river. I walked that whole thing and the Gabrielanos and the Lusanos, they got in a fight over whose village it was, but we couldn't find anything to prove which one was right. Because the Gabrielanos technically are on the north side of the San Antonio River. Lusanos are on the south side. That's all you needed to know.
More than needed to know. Go ahead, Greg.
Ted.
That's fine. I just have, because this is a similar project, but it's going to run along Bluff, just make sure our traffic mitigation is, there are a lot of people use Bluff, correct?
Correct, but this project should be entirely onsite. Only traffic should be of any type of trucks delivering onto the site, but everything should be enclosed operationally on the site. But there certainly will be the racks coming out, that will be on there for getting dirt and dust off. They'll certainly be going around and watering, dust control quite a bit, but we don't have any planned, any construction within the street that would require any type of traffic control at this time.
And then this, this a lot, because that's that federal land part of that grant we got, we're okay, we don't have any special...
No, we're allowed to do all the construction on that because that, and it's for this purpose, which is for public benefit and public health.
And as far as the archaeological, if you dig and you dig too, the only thing I think you're going to find is the spark plug factory's remnants that may be around over there. So I mean, a bunch of ceramic stuff, because that used to be a huge spark plug factory on that, near that property. It was actually in the back part of Delapi's and the old dairy, Doc Saunders' place along that area. Who knows what they dumped in there? So if you find some old ceramic spark plugs, give them to Kevin, okay? It's historical value.
Greg.
And Ted, what happens when they find those spark plugs? They have to take it back to their lab to make sure that those plugs were not used by an Indian tribe, okay? So my question is just, how many days of grading do you anticipate on this project?
I did ask the contractor, he's anticipating about 26 days.
Times two consultants sitting out there.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
You don't think they're making our money off this unit?
I'll tell you a story later.
Robert, did you have anything? Okay, ma'am, do we have any cards?
We have no speaker cards on this item.
All right. Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please vote. Okay, item seven is an appeal hearing. This order of appeal hearing is staff presentation, council questions of staff. Open the public hearing, that way the public speakers can speak in favor, against, or neutral. Close the public hearing, council discussion and action. And planning director, this is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a project that is proposing a private park entertainment facility on 26 acres. It's located at the western terminus of North Drive, which is a private street west of California Avenue. And the planning commission reviewed the project on December 11th and they voted 3-2 to deny the project. So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to skip forward to the description of the project because what we gave you in your staff report is exactly what we gave to the planning commission, to which it, the planning commission deliberated and came to the conclusion that they did. So basically, what's being proposed is the legalization of existing structures for the private park equestrian and entertainment facility. The use is permitted in the AE zone where the property is located upon approval of a conditional use permit. And then related to that are ancillary uses that can be approved as well, that include restaurants and other related facilities only when associated with and incidental to all of the uses that are permitted under the entertainment and recreation category. The, the, there are 30 buildings on the property. They've, they've all been constructed, some have been constructed without permits, some didn't need permits. There's a table in your staff report that summarizes all of this. There's actually eight buildings that have been constructed that were, should have been required to get building permits for. A lot of the buildings are, because of their size, do not, are not required to get building permits for those. But the, what's being proposed is a, the event facility that would consist of these 30 buildings. It does not include the private residence, which is on the property. So all of these buildings that you're looking at tonight are, they're not accessory buildings to the residence. These are actual necessary pertinent buildings to the conditional use permit that's being requested, which is for the event center. The properties, all the construction's been on the southeast corner of the property, up next to the terminus of North Drive. The property itself actually goes under the river to the north side of the river, but all of the construction has occurred on the south side of the river, down towards North Drive. The applicant did provide all of the needed materials that are asked for on the stat, on the application so that the planning commission can make its deliberation. Likewise, site plan requirements were all provided so that the planning commission could look at the project. The, there are findings that are needed for, to be able to adopt a conditional use permit. And in this case, there are two being requested. One is for the overall use itself and the other one is for a proposed caretaker dwelling for the property. The findings for conditional use permits are at the discretion of the decision-making body. The required findings that need to be made are that the proposed use will not impact the general plan or the public convenience or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood. The second one is the requested use will not adversely affect the adjoining land uses and the growth and development of the area. The third one is the size and shape of the site proposed for the use is adequate to allow full development of the proposed use. And then the fourth, that the traffic generated by the proposed use will not impose an undue burden upon the streets and highways in the area. The, an initial study was prepared for the project itself. The conclusion was that a negative declaration be adopted. The, so that's a basis of what the project is. And I'm going to jump forward back to the front of the staff report where there's a summary of the discussion and issues that occurred with the planning commission before they, before they took action on the project. There were seven issues, emergency vehicle access, vehicle impact and road maintenance on the private street, noise and operational hours, traffic, number of restrooms, potential continual use restaurant, and construction without permits. So the big one that probably garnered the most discussion was emergency vehicle access. Now, the project was reviewed at project review board and both the fire department and the sheriff's department were in attendance at that meeting and provided comments. At that point, there were no issues brought up with regards to there not being emergency access to the property. What we did after the planning commission meeting is we met with representatives from the fire department because the issue really is the fire engines and the potential or lack of potential for those to get back to the property. Excuse me. And the conclusion stayed the same with the fire department, that the project site does have emergency access available to it even during events. And there are, I'll turn it over to the fire department if they want to add to that or if there are any questions directly to the fire department. Another issue that was brought up for discussion with the planning commission was the potential impact to the road itself. It's a private street, it's a dirt road, and one of the issues that the planning commission discussed was the difficulty, sorry. I can't not get rid of this. One of the issues that the planning commission brought up was the problem that private roads in the city have when it comes to dealing with multiple owners and getting everybody to agree to the cost and contribution of that road maintenance. The project right now, because it's a private street, there are no conditions of approval for the project for the improvement of North Drive. Any improvement to that street would require approval and agreement between all of the properties that have access to that street. So there are no conditions for street improvements on the project. Another issue that was brought up was the noise and operational hours. The project currently is conditioned, or was conditioned, that all active, or all events conclude by 10:00 PM. And one of the issues that was brought up for discussion with the planning commission was that there was no limit on how early in the day an event could start. A condition was never added because they voted to deny the project. But one of the issues that came up with that was that if, if the starting time was delayed to too late in the morning, it would preclude, potentially preclude, equestrian events at the... to too late in the morning, it would potentially preclude equestrian events at the site. But again, no condition was discussed to address that specifically. The other issue that came up was traffic. Again, from our discussions at project review board and the initial study analysis that was done for the project, it was determined that the traffic impact would be not significant on the street or to the neighborhood. Another issue brought up was the number of restrooms. The statement was made that the site potentially does not have enough restrooms on it. If the project is ultimately approved by the city council, one of the requirements is that they have to pull building permits for all of the buildings, and in that review, if it's determined that there are not enough restrooms, then they'll be required to add restrooms. But that was not an issue that was brought up by the building and safety division during project review. So, as it currently stands, there's not a condition for more restrooms, but they still have to comply with state code in the number of restrooms provided based upon the occupancy and the number of people using it. Another concern that was brought up was a potential continual use restaurant at the project site. The applicants who are here tonight, and they can speak to this issue as well, they're not proposing that there be food prepared on-site. It would all be prepared offsite and brought onto the site for the events. Nonetheless, with approval of the conditional use permit, it does allow ancillary uses such as a restaurant that can operate ancillary to the events on the property. And the concern was that if this proves to be enormously successful in almost a daily activity, you could end up having a restaurant that's open most of the time, and it wouldn't be limited to just event people. Anyone could drive in and go to this. The concern was that anyone could drive in and go to this restaurant. So that was an issue that was brought up. Construction without permits, there was concern, angst, if you want to call it, about the buildings that were built without permits. As is typical with any project where there's construction without permits, once they come in to apply for the permits, they do have to pay double application fees, and they have to also do whatever works needed, so that inspections of the construction can occur, so that those permits can be ultimately approved or signed off. Just an update, just to be clear, there was a mistake in the planning commission staff report indicated, or in the notice, that there was access to the property from Philly Lane. There is not access from Philly Lane, and they're not proposing that there be access from Philly Lane. It was a staff mistake. We apologize. And then with that, now that the project has been appealed, or the action of the planning commission has been appealed, the options that are available to the city council are to uphold the planning commission action, which is denial of the project, and that only requires a roll call vote. Another action that the city council can take is to overturn the action of the planning commission and approve the project, and adopt the resolution that's attached to your staff report, which is the same conditions that were presented to the planning commission. Or you can overturn the action of the planning commission, approve the project, and alter or change or add conditions as you see needed. One thing I do want to add, I did meet with a council member, I don't know which one, or I spoke to you on the phone, and I indicated that the project is conditioned that all the parking for events be on the site. It does not have that condition. But it does have adequate parking on-site. But it doesn't have a condition that says all the participants have to park on the property. So whoever I spoke with, I apologize, that's not in there. And with that, the applicant is in the audience, and there were a packet of opposition letters that were presented to the planning commission, which were attached to your staff report, and there were additional opposition letters and support letters that came in today that you received copies at the dais. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Does council want to hear from the applicants before you ask any questions or comments, or what's your choice? Okay, we'll do the questions up here first, then we'll get the applicants to speak.
Well, you hurt my feelings, Steve, because you and I had a conversation on Monday about this, so I'm certainly glad you were impressed. I'll try to run down most of these, but I'll come back to a few for discussion. But you did mention Philly Lane. That was in error, and I just want to just have that reiterated, that at no time is Philly Lane, being a private street, is under any consideration now or in the immediate or foreseeable future. This conditional use permit, does it run with the land, or does it remain just with the applicant?
The way it's currently conditioned, well, CUPs run with the land generally, and there's no condition currently that the project only run with the owner. So right now, if it was approved, it would run with the land.
I think what we're going to try to get to is that we have these seven categories that we need to address to give proper direction. Would you mind going through some of the conditions with me at this time as questions?
Sure.
Some are just for clarification, but it's also a direction that I want to see where we'd be heading on. But I'm going to keep this, I'll try to stay in order. Actually, number nine, and this might be directed to you, John. Condition number nine, no occupancy of any building and/or structure shall be permitted which is not in compliance with the approved plans and accepting upon specific review and approval. My question to that is, from this point, that there cannot be any activities taking place in the near future until, if approved, all these approvals and conditions are completed?
Yes.
So if there's something scheduled next month, it's not allowed to happen unless everything is completed?
Yes, that's the way it is now. I mean, obviously, the council has the ability, if you decided to approve it, and there were issues brought to you, that you could modify that, but normally, that's what happens. There are buildings built without permits, they need to be permitted, and occupancies issued before they can be used.
On 13, Steve, you talk about the property owner being responsible for on-site landscaping and offsite landscaping with the public right-of-way. I'm just thinking, that public right-of-way should be scratched on that? I mean, there is no offsite landscaping, is there?
Correct.
Or any required?
And actually, you could just scratch the whole condition, because the one thing I left out in the AE zone, it's a residential zone, so it doesn't have minimum landscaping requirements like a commercial zone does. So you could actually just take that out.
So you could delete 13?
Definitely no public right-of-way. No.
Is that a yes or a no?
Well, you know what, let's keep it in, we'll just take out the right-of-way, because we do want to maintain the property, so.
33 was on food services. So in your staff report, you talked about at this time, no restaurant proposed, and they would just be bringing in food and serving during those events, but your note is grease interceptor shall be required for all food service uses. So is that, even if you bring in food, you'll still be required to put in a grease interceptor?
Yeah, and the reason for that is, one, if there ever is an event where they do cook on-site, the grease interceptor's got to be there. But even more importantly, when food's brought in, you've got dishes to clean and that sort of thing, so it still needs to be there.
Okay. And the size of that grease interceptor will be determined by which department? It's usually a health, isn't it? Health department?
Well, no, we usually depend on the size of the project. Usually, we go with the minimum 750-gallon grease interceptor. That usually handles almost any business. And rarely do we have to go beyond that, unless it's a pretty substantial food service business. But when we're in doubt, we will contact, talk with the health department, too.
Okay. So that led me to, my next question related to that is, is those buildings, okay, are they connected to sewer, city sewer?
My understanding is they currently connected to a septic system that was built inappropriately. That's part of the buildings to help service them. But part of the condition is they would have to connect to public sewer, and they would demolish the existing septic system for those buildings, because there is already a... So that's what's, they're going to remove that as part of their conditions.
And that'll be your department on the sewer?
Correct.
And their sewer available where? On North or down the private street?
Down the private street.
Okay. So everything's going to connect to sewer?
Correct.
All right. 59, and this will also go to condition 62, is, Steve, you talk about, excuse me, Title 24 energy calcs for, basically, heating and air for conditioning? More so in condition 62, for the proposed conditioning of the multipurpose event building? Should not this also include all Title 24 for electrical compliance?
Yeah.
All Title 24 standards?
Yeah, every building that needs a permit will be required, so we can alter those two conditions, and everything that needs a permit has to be Title 24.
Okay. All right. So not just mechanical, but all electrical and whatever else? I'll wrap this up real quick. So on the site plan, in what we show in the AE zone, is the recreational potential, and in the application, it's the equestrian element. Where is the area, there's no arena shown, there's no... Where's the recreational animal keeping, or tennis courts, or golf course shown on this site plan?
They don't have one right now. And the applicant can probably speak better to what they intend to do with the property, but those are not on the site plan.
Okay. But we base the application on, that's the premise, correct?
The potential for equestrian and entertainment facilities, yes.
Couldn't have put that on the plan?
I'll let the applicant address that.
Just as a clarification, or just for information, Steve, on the site plan, number 16 is the main house, but when I went to the site, and it's a beautiful facility, the big house is a guest house.
Yeah, what happened, and I can't explain the history of what happened when, but the original house was up by Philly Lane, no access, but it was up by Philly Lane. Here it is. So the applicant, not this applicant, a former owner came in and got approval to build a guest house, which is now the main house on the property. And the... Where I was going with the answer here, but the main house was originally approved as a guest house. But it's transformed into the main house on the property, and the original house, that was the main house when the guest house was approved, is now becoming, or proposed to become, a caretaker dwelling.
Last question, before his pager goes off and dashes out of here. Chief, do you want me to address that to you, or to your capable right-hand person?
With us tonight is Sandy Hastings from the office of the Fire Marshal. She's our fire safety specialist for the city, and she'll be answering those questions.
This is the reason you're here, Sandy. So along with the sheriff, you guys went down the road, drove down it?
Yes.
And that you found that adequate?
Yes.
And one of the thoughts I had was, and it was based on a couple of comments and letters, and I can't say for sure if that's one resident or two residents, whoever shares the private road, that basically, when there's activity taking place, I can't get into my driveway, or I can't get out of my driveway. So when you went down there, it was wide open. I would think that when you're going to be called to be there, it's going to be when there's a lot of activity and a lot of traffic. Do you feel any impact with, if there's more cars and activity on that road? I mean, should we have a condition that says no parking on the street, something to that effect?
I don't think it would be a bad idea, because there are areas of the road. The road is not a consistent width, because of some trees and other, you know, obstructions. So there are points where it reduces down to, I believe, 16 feet because of a tree stump, and then it widens in other areas. So there are pinch points on that road. And if someone were to park, for example, where that tree stump is, then they would reduce the width of that road dramatically, and it would possibly make it where we couldn't get an engine down there, in the event of an emergency. For the most part, if nobody's parking on that street, of course, it's completely clear and smooth, and the road at this point is in good condition. Chief Lane and I both drove it, and it is in good condition. And then, once you get to the property, it's concrete. So no issues getting onto the actual property itself. I don't think it would be a bad idea to condition it that parking, that the guests from that location not be permitted to park on that street, to lessen the impact of the neighbors, and to reduce the likelihood that we would not be able to get onto the property during an event.
Okay. And then, last part, I hope. I'd really like to ask this of Scott, but weight capacity on a residential road, or that gravel road, required by fire is what?
Do we visit?
And is it adequate for that?
Sandy, you'll answer the adequate part, but it's a... $75,000?
It's $40,000 on that road, and it would be $75,000 in a larger commercial property.
And you feel that's adequate?
I feel that's adequate. We do require that and use that on roads in Norco, throughout Norco.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Robin, you got anything? I got one question. I don't know, maybe this is your, Sandy, maybe you counted them. I didn't. On North, when you come off there and go to that property, how many houses, how many residences on North Street there?
I believe four. Four on the north end of North.
Right, that's the total amount of residents that live there.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a couple of questions. And that...
Um, and that alludes to Steve on 17 on the items, open gravel identified as, uh, the 93 parking spaces for customer employee parking. Uh, those gravel parts, even though it says 93, they're not marked out at all. That's just assuming that's what you can park there, correct?
Correct.
But there is no specific marked plan or marked parking?
Okay.
Uh, on number 18, he had the accessible parking, uh, provided based upon the occupancy of multipurpose event building. Having been there and, and the ADA accessibility in that, and you can chatter, or you can say, it's, normally don't we pave, and then, right now, there's no gravel. Uh, I mean, it's all gravel. I didn't, when I was up there, I recall seeing a, a paved part for ADA parking. So we, are they in compliance with that? I mean, the wheelchair access there, granted, I mean, you know, I have to use one, is that it is difficult up there if you don't get up close to that building. So is that a condition to improve that, to, uh, bring it up to the new standards?
Yes.
For ADA, so paved?
Paved.
Parking, and how many would they be required to have there?
Uh, I don't have the table in front of me, but based upon the, the number, I think they're only gonna be required to provide one.
Okay, 'cause normally it's one per hundred, and you've got two hundred, so it's, I would at least think two, but that's, if you can go check the code on that, we'll get through that. Uh, and then, Councilman Newton, we alluded to it on the, I believe, 59, the ADA access and inaccessibility in the restrooms would be also the same thing?
Yep.
So they all be ADA compliant? The other thing that I'm gonna ask you, is there, do you know if there's a property or homeowners association that maintains that? You know, normally the private streets, all the property owners have some kind of, uh, agreement or something to do that. Is there one in that, on place on North at all?
Not that I know of.
So it's just, would somebody decide that they're gonna pay for the, the upgrade on the gravel road, or just like we do, I believe, E, uh, the East Street, you know, they have this flurry, they all, the resident, there's nothing like that at all?
Not that I know of. Um, did the...
The homeowners could probably, that'd be nothing, they'd have that.
Yes, they would, but I'm not aware of an association. There's only four, so...
All right. Now, that's all the questions. Thank you.
Okay, if that's all the, uh, questions, then we'll get the applicant to come up and, uh, speak, please. Well, I guess, according to the attorney here, I need to open the public hearing. It's open now.
Okay. I am Tim Shamber. Uh, me and my wife are the applicants. We own the property. We're longtime Norco residents. Uh, I think I moved here in 1976, attended junior high, and went to high school, met my wife there, uh, got married, raised our kids, raised our family. Our kids went to, uh, Norco High, and, um, we're both graduates. So I want to just establish that I'm not just somebody who just moved in and trying to do something crazy. We bought the property, love the property. My wife likes animals, horses. Uh, we did that right away. People came to us and wanted to, uh, have their kids get married there. And I'm not gonna say that I didn't see that when I first saw the property, 'cause right away, uh, other friends, who we asked their opinions, they said, "God, you could do weddings here, you could do weddings here." I'm like, "Okay." And that's what we set out to do. We kind of had some people approach us to do weddings. So we did two or three weddings. I did my daughter's gradu-, uh, prom there, and we didn't have a barn, and what was happening is the police were showing up at nine o'clock, nine-thirty, and saying that they could hear our music. And I want to assure you that I'm not out to make a big ol' party, you know, really loud, and I just wanna have enough, have it loud enough so they could have a dance and have a good time. Uh, I went out and talked to the police officers, and they said, "You know, it's not really loud, but our res-, our code says that if I can hear it within a hundred feet, then I have to tell you to turn up the music or whatever." And, uh, so I had, I had two or three, uh, I had a birthday party for myself, I had a Halloween party, and about the third or fourth time the police came out, he says, "You know, we're gonna have to do something about this." So then I decided, "Okay, I'll build a barn. I'll build a barn to try to keep the noise down." And the policeman actually disclosed to me who was calling, and I tried to talk to that, uh, resident, and he wasn't hearing anything. So I decided I would build a barn. So I went to the city, I, uh, hired an architect and an engineer, they drew me up plans, I went to the city, and they said, "You can't build something that big." I wanted to build a 3,500 square foot building. I have 26 acres, 14 of it, of which is mitigated land. I have, uh, another, it was actually 12, 12 to 13 acres is mitigated land, so I have 13 acres where I could build a barn and do what I wanted to do. Uh, as it turned out, they told me I couldn't do that, so I, I got plans again, I, I shrunk it down, brought it in, and she said, "No, it's still, you have to be a thousand square feet or smaller." And I said, "I can't build something that small, because it won't house what I wanna do. I wanna do weddings, I wanna put the music inside, so it's not loud, I've got barn doors so I could close it in, so it's not that loud." She said, "You can't do it." Well, now that I've gone through the whole process, and I did go ahead and built it anyways, uh, I should've been given the permits. I should've been given the permits for my, uh, property, 'cause I was in an AE zone, which, which I should've been able to get. Now, I built a 2,000 square foot building, I've been told by the city officials, I could have built a 10,000 square foot. I was within my rights to do it, and the city should've approved it, I could've, but that didn't happen. But I had to do something, because I didn't want the police to keep coming to my property. So that's why I built the building. The other built, there's another building, it was what we call the bride room now and the bathrooms. That building was already existing when I bought the property. Previous owner was doing weddings, and he had put in the, the bathrooms along with that building, but I went to improve that building, and it was before I even built the barn. I went to improve the building, 'cause it was really dilapidated, and, uh, the bathrooms are in bad shape. I tried to just improve it, and after a couple days trying to improve it, I just kinda got mad at it, and then I tore it down, and then I built a new one. And then, a year and a half later is when I built the barn, is when I went to the city. So now, all I wanna do, and all I'm trying to do, is I wanna be able to have 15 weddings a year, 12 to 18 somewhere in that neighborhood, 'cause it is still my house. I don't wanna, I don't wanna be having a wedding every single weekend. I wanna have my peace and quiet, but it's a big piece of property, requires a lot of funding. Every time I turn around, there's 5,000 here, I got wells, I got hill, I got all kinds of stuff that I'm always paying for. So I wanted to find a way to, uh, make some money. Uh, I don't ever wanna open a restaurant, we never intend to open a restaurant, you could even put that in your CUP thing that says you can never open a restaurant, build a restaurant, 'cause I never want it. Um, the other thing is, uh, we talked about, I just heard you fellows talking about, um, putting pavement in. I have no desire to put in pavement, and Danny Azavito at the Planning Commission pointed out at that meeting that DG is okay for the ADA requirements, that you could put in DG, and that's what I wanna put in. Also, the last meeting that I came to, I really didn't bring anybody to support me, do anything for me, I just came by myself, me and my wife, and we didn't have no opposition as to the people who brought opposition to us. I know the number one reason is everybody on Philly Lane showed up, because they thought that was gonna open up. It's not gonna open up, but now that they're here, they could say whatever complaints they want. Um, I did bring a little bit of support. Uh, I also wanna point out that I don't just do my weddings, I do a lot of community events. We've done, uh, Spark of Love Toy Drive in 2017, 2018. This year, we decided not to do Spark of Love, but we did a muscular dystrophy, uh, drive. We have a family in Norco who has two children that are in wheelchairs, and they wanna join a soccer, like a basketball soccer thing, and they need special wheelchairs. So they put on a fundraiser for not only their kids, but for more kids on the team to raise money, so they'll have, uh, wheelchairs to play in those games. We do, uh, a lot of Boy Scout activities, and a lot of these things we don't charge for. I don't charge the Boy Scouts, they, they have what's called a jump over the bridge thing. We have a big koi pond with a bridge, and when you become a Cub Scout to a Boy Scout, it's called bridging the gap or something like that. So we've, we've had four or five of those. We've had multiple, uh, children in Norco who got, uh, they had achieved the Eagle Scout to become an Eagle Scout, and we've told the leaders that every time somebody achieves Eagle Scout, they could use our facility, and they could have a banquet for their Eagle Scout, and we've had many of those. We've also used our facility for many of the Norco High School athletic events, or athletic teams for their banquets. Uh, I remember when I was in school, we used to go, we, we started out doing restaurants, but my junior and senior year, we started having them inside the cafeteria, and it's really not cool to have a beautiful cafeteria. So I feel like I could lend my place, uh, to the athletic people, and we've had a lot of people have them. We've had the baseball team, we've had the rugby team, we've had the cheerleaders. Cheerleaders come out every year and do all their pictures on our facility. They've had their banquets there. We've had, uh, uh, football has had a bingo thing to raise money, uh, for the Gridiron Club. Um, I, I can't say, I should've wrote down all the things that we do, 'cause we do a lot of community events for a lot of people, and we don't charge everybody for everything. And, and like I said, I just want to do, I wanna be able to have 12 to 15 events. Uh, I'm willing to meet whatever CUPs, you know, they make me meet, and I've gone over most of them with, uh, Steve, and I've agreed to do those. And, uh, I've asked a few people to come and speak again on my behalf, but there's only, there's one thing on a CUP that I don't like, and it's saying that I have to get a, uh, precise grading plan, uh, and I, and I don't really want to do that, because I don't feel like I should've had to do that, because number one, my buildings were built in different years, and it says that they, and so I brought my architect, he has more about the rules and all that stuff, so he drew something up, and he wrote up the rules, and I'm gonna have him talk about how that works and how he thinks it should work, but I don't believe I should. I'm, I'm worried about if you, uh, make me do this precise grading plan, that they're gonna come up with more stuff like a storm drain, and how you're gonna get rid of the water, and all that kinda stuff, so I'm worried about the cost of that. And just to get a civil engineer involved, you're talking 12 to 15,000 dollars. I never did any grading, all I did was dig the footings for my building and put it up. I've since asked the city, "Why do I have to have that?" And they said, "Well, it's got, if it's 5,000 square feet or bigger, you gotta have that." Well, my building is not 5,000 square feet. Well, then they said, "Well, you're gonna combine the two, combine the bathrooms and the bride room type thing, that's what we call, it's the bride room bathrooms, with the event building. Now it's over 5,000 square feet." Well, if, if that was the case, why do I only have to put fire sprinklers in the multipurpose building? They're not, they're not putting those two buildings together there, they're not saying, "Now, we're gonna put them both together, you gotta put it in that building, too," because the other building's under 1,000 square feet. So I feel like I shouldn't have to do, that's really the only CUP that I don't wanna follow, and I've been told that the city council could help me with that, and I, like I said, I did bring my architect. Um, I also brought some people from my main road. I had, I had another gentleman who wasn't able to come, but he sent me a text, he wanted me to read you a big text. Instead, I gave it to Sonia. Sonia owns the riding stable, uh, on, right on the corner there on my street. She has a, a riding stable there, and she's very good friends with Gary as well as I am, and Gary is my next-door neighbor. He's the neighbor closest to me on that street. He said he would come, but he's working, and he's working nights, and he said he couldn't get off work to do it, and I didn't want him to take a day off work just to come and speak. So, uh, I've had, I got four or five people who signed cards, and they're gonna come up and speak on my behalf, so I, I hope that you could see it in, you know, you're hard to vote it through, 'cause we've had a lot of, you know, weddings, uh, class reunions, a lot of stuff, and I really primarily just want to cater to the Norco people, and I think it's a good thing for Norco, and not only helps me make money, but it also brings revenue to the city, 'cause I, I know one wedding, we had the, uh, the groom's whole family was from Wisconsin, and they had 30 or 40 people, all flew out for the wedding, they all stayed in motels and hotels, whatever we had, and they ate at our restaurants, and they were here for almost a week, and they're not the only ones. We've had people come from out of the country, you know, for our events. So it brings revenue to the city, not as well, not just me, and like, and again, I wanna go back to the restaurant. I'm never gonna open a restaurant, I don't wanna be in the food business. The only food that's ever gonna be served at my place is gonna be what's catered in. Uh, I mean, we might do hamburgers and hot dogs for like, we have a, uh, Easter, Easter, uh, Easter egg hunt. We've done that for four or five years now, and it's gotten up to like 70, 80 kids. Well, with all those kids, you got all the grandmas and parents and everything, and that's the only thing that I think I've ever cooked, and we just barbecue. We barbecue outside on, and we make hamburgers and hot dogs. That's all it's ever gonna be. I'm never gonna be cooking, I'm never gonna open a B&amp;B, I'm not, I just, I just wanna have, be able to, uh, do weddings. So I guess I'm done. Any, any questions?
Anyone have any questions for you?
Can I just reserve the right to ask questions of the applicant after the other speaker cards?
Fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, uh, do we have any cards?
Yes, the first speaker is Alan Day.
I'll remind everybody on the speakers, we have, uh, three minutes, and I will hold you to it, so, Chad, you got the clock? Okay. Martin.
Ready to go? Yeah. Thank you. Um, hi, uh, my name's Alan Day. I've been a resident of, uh, Norco for almost 40 years, um, retired from Irvine Police Department. When I worked for the police department, I was involved in the operations for numerous special events, including the Irvine Meadows Amphitheater, so I'm well, uh, familiar with , uh, large event operation. Um, I've also had the pleasure of raising both of my sons in town. They both played Jaff football, attended Norco schools. Um, all the time that I've lived here, uh, as a matter of fact, both of my kids attended Town and Country Day School. Um, all the times that I've lived here, the time that I've lived here, I felt it was important to support local businesses. Um, I remember the first time I went into Norco Hardware to write a check, and I didn't even have a local address yet, but they said, "Oh, you live in Norco, fine, no ID necessary." And I knew this was the town for me. Um, I, I'm, somebody mentioned Trina's Restaurant, that brought back memories from long ago. Um, I, I've known, I've had the pleasure of knowing the Shambres for many years, know their family. Um, when they started holding events at their property, um, I think we might've been one of the very first ones. Uh, my son went to school with their kids, and he and his wife, uh, wanted to get married there, and at that time, they didn't have a building, they actually had to bring in a, uh, a large tent, because it rained that day. Um, a couple of years later, my wife, who was, uh, sick with breast cancer, uh, knew that the end was approaching, and she approached Tammy Shamber, and she said, "I wanna plan my memorial." And she said that's where she wanted to have it, and she did. Um, wonderful man. Um, my, my other son at that time was planning on getting married at a, uh, winery down in Temecula. He saw the facility that they had, and he and his, his current wife, they walked away from their deposit at the winery so that they could have their wedding, uh, at the Shambres event, uh, facility. Um, I've seen the way they operate it, and they operate a quality, quality program. Uh, they have their people standing at the gate, checking people that are coming in to make sure that they're on an invitation list. Uh, this isn't something where somebody's gonna crash the party and create problems, because they have their people watching. Um, they have, uh, the parking is located on the side of the property away from the adjacent houses. Uh, it, it, it just worked out that way, and it works out very well. Um, when they do have drinking there, when they're serving alcohol, it's their folks that are serving the alcohol, it's not some bartender that got hired for the day. They're watching the people, they're making sure the people are behaving themselves. Um, in short, I feel this is the type of, kind of a small, family-run business that we in Norco should support and should have more of. Um, Tim made a really good point. It's his house. He's not gonna have a restaurant operating on his property at his house. He wants to be able to live there and live a peaceful life, he's just trying to operate a small business, and I think we should support it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Sonia Trefethan.
Guys, thank you for your time. Um, I am one of their immediate neighbors on that road of North Drive, uh, the tree stump... The tree stumps belong to me, and I will definitely get them out of the way. I wouldn't want to do anything to interfere with emergency vehicles getting through there. So that's a really simple thing for us to get fixed. We've been observing the activities that they have down there, and it, we've not had any problems on the road from my perspective of it. The traffic flows really easily down there, it's well-managed at the gate, and it flows in. I've never seen it backing up or having any problems with parking or, or anything of those issues. As well as noise, it's just not been an issue. It must be the barn, but I'm an immediate neighbor and haven't heard, had any noise issues, haven't had any repercussions from the people that are there. The type of people that are coming through are very nice and respectful as they come in and out, and there's just been no issues from my perspective. Tim mentioned the letter that Gary sent, and Gary's the last house as you go down North Drive, the very last house on the right-hand side before their gates. So I think if anybody was going to be affected by it, probably Gary would be the number one person. The, the letter that he said that he would like us to read for you is, Dear Norco City Council, my name's Gary Dix, and I would like to inform you that my neighbor, Tim Shamber, is a great neighbor. He takes pride in his property. I enjoy having weddings next door to me. They are classy and positive events. And again, he lives at the 367 North Drive, which is just before his location. I would love to see them continue running it. There's no doubt from a neighbor's perspective that they're willing to do whatever it takes to make sure that the roads are maintained and that neighbors are happy. They're very available to all of us and easy to talk to, and just really, really good people, running a simple business and doing a beautiful job of it. So we're happy to have them next to us. I agree that it's bringing a lot of business into town, as my business does. It comes all the way straight down Sixth Street, all the way through, through town to the end. So I know the impact that that has on the local businesses, and it's, it's good business that they're bringing in it, it's a nice group of people. So we're definitely in support, and that's myself and the immediate neighbors and our immediate neighbor to them, as well as the one across from me I've talked to recently, and everything seems to be on a good path, so if there's anything that we can do or answer to help make it go through, let us know.
Thank you.
Jared Vera.
My name is Jared Vera, I'm the senior pastor of the River Church here in the city of Norco, and I've had the pleasure of working with the Shambres for, and partnering with them for several years. They do not attend my church, at least not yet. But I've done several weddings there, memorial services, and fundraising events. I've helped participate, partnered with them for the Sparks of Love, and helped them gather the toys, obviously, for children in need, and, which makes me think of like, the emergency vehicle access stuff, like, we've actually had the fire engine on-site for that event for kids to hang out, and it's had to leave at different times while the, you know, guests are there. And so, as far as a capacity issue and being able to access, I don't think it is at all an issue. But, you know, I know they don't want to grow it into some big, great thing, but I can tell you, the level of service, the excellence, just who they are, that the farm has an opportunity to really be a flagship venue of its type for the city of Norco. Incredible, incredible service there, like none I've, I've experienced, and I've, I've done venues, I don't wanna say names, but I've done venues, I've done weddings at other venues here in town, and there's nothing like what the Shambres do here. I believe the, the Shambres represent us well, the rural lifestyle, commitment to community, family life. They have been extremely generous to the community, like the Scouts and the Eagle Scouts to our local food bank. They probably don't want me to say this, but they are, and have been our largest single donor to our storehouse food bank that serves hundreds of Norco residents on a monthly basis. And so, I think having the Shambres here in the farm is an incredible asset to our community. Denying, I think the, the use would be, would be a disservice to our city. And, and so, yeah, I wanna encourage a yes vote on the, on the use of facility, and even if you have it within your hour, if you will, to, to allow them to, to continue to accommodate guests as they fulfill these conditions, I would strongly encourage you to do that if you're able to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, David Hague.
Good evening, council members, mayor. I will be brief, to the extent I can, in a three-minute conversation with you. Two issues occurred to me. I would identify myself as a resident on Philly Lane. I live at 350 Philly Lane, which puts me one house between me and the start of the property under discussion. There are two issues to my mind that the council really needs to consider, one of which was significant to the Planning Commission, and is almost an underlying theme here, and it's the access issues for those who live on North Street, who wrote letters and complained about parking issues. It was suggested at the Planning Commission that an attempt be made to create some sort of a compact that would allow everybody to live in peace on North Street, so that you don't have people parking your garage, on your driveway, blocking your access, what have you. That does not appear to have been done, and I would suggest very strongly that an effort be made to do that before the council actually votes on this particular issue, because I think that might alleviate a great deal of the concern that those of us who are opposed to this as a continuing operation, let's be honest, none of us want to prohibit somebody from making good use of their property and being good neighbors. We're not here to fight about that kind of an issue. We're not here to fight about the, the humanity of the person who's presenting this particular proposal to you. We're trying to make the community work properly, and that includes working for us who live there, and none of the people live there right next to the, the property itself, who do listen to the noise, who do deal with the dust, who do deal with the traffic. The second issue, and this, I think can be addressed, there is one thing that scares me to death, and that's the possibility of a restaurant there. I cannot think of a more unsuitable location for a restaurant. Those of you who know Silver Lakes, would give you the complete opposite of what I would call an event-type restaurant. Where you have that massive entrance, you have, you know, Hamner Avenue, you have lights, you have everything you need to allow access anytime, day or night, whatever the restaurant wants. We are talking about not a gravel road, a dirt road, one lane, that if we're allowing a restaurant, and it's not even being requested, but as was pointed out, this runs with the land. And if you approve something which says, well, I'm never gonna do it, and two years from now we sells, and somebody says, well, you know, I'm gonna make some money on this. I can put in a restaurant. I can get people here at 6:00 in the morning, and we can run it till 10:00 at night, and I can even ask for some sort of a modification. And that, I think, should be addressed in any sort of discussion of the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker, Clint Stone.
Name's Clint Stone. I am a resident on Philly Lane. Like Dave said, I'm not opposed to somebody using their property and making money, I don't wanna hinder anybody's livelihood. My concern, I can't add anything onto his, I have a two-and-a-half-year-old, he'll be three soon, I have another baby coming, but Philly Lane's private. I bought that, on that street, because it is private, it's very quiet, and I have no traffic, really. The fear I have is vehicles driving down my road while my kid's out there riding his little power wheel or his little bicycle. It's been quiet as of late, but maybe that's because the events have actually stopped because of the processes that are in place. When they were holding parties, we did have people that would go down the street, because they do live on Philly, they'll bypass the dirt road, thinking that it's something else, and they'll end up turning on my street, and then turning around and coming out. So my only concern is, is the safety of that, and how to redirect that traffic to make sure it goes down North Drive and not Philly. But then, like Dave said, if the homeowner decides to sell in the future, hopefully, you know, don't wanna wish anybody any kind of ill will, but guarantee in life, you're gonna die at some point. So if, if something happens tragically to the homeowner or anything on the property, what will the next people do with that property, and how will it impact my house if I'm still there, or future residents? But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Suzanne Hay.
Good evening, council members. I used to advocate for a livelihood, but it's been 15 years, and I don't really have my sea legs, so I'm doing the best I can. Obviously, I'm connected with Mr. Hague. I live on Philly Lane, and I appreciate the fact that the error with regard to our street was corrected. However, there are still issues which involve, one, I have a concern about the emergency response, in the sense that if, clearly, the road can accommodate a fire truck. However, if there is some kind of event that occurs that requires an emergency response, for example, not too long ago, a palm tree in that last house that's been referred to on, on North Drive somehow got on fire. My neighbor came home from work, saw the smoke coming up behind his barn, and called the fire department. Well, that was at a time when nothing was going on. The situation that concerns me is if that happened during an event with two, the maximum 200 people, people would see that, be scared, and be driving out of that property. The fire truck's gonna have to be able to go against traffic to get through there, so I think that there are issues that, that could come up. The other issues are noise and traffic, as Mr. Stone stated. Once events started happening, their, Philly Streets, Philly Lane is a really quiet street. There are five residences. We've been there for 17 years. We, the kids, kids who grew up there, that's where they learned to ride their bicycles. People, it's a great place after a rain to train your horse to walk through water puddles. Some of my neighbors, and neighbors down on California, when we were training our, taking obedience courses from Mr. Livel down on Eighth Street, we would practice in the evening with our, with, or in the day with our dogs. So it's a street that can be used for local traffic without the fear of vehicles. And, and as I, I really, I took exception with the finding requested that the impact of that on the local residents is insignificant, was the word that was used. It's not insignificant. The noise also...
I'm gonna stop you, ma'am. We've got a lot of speakers, and we go by the three minutes. You can give your, rest of your report to the city clerk there.
I was just gonna say, the noise does impact our ability to use our property.
Thank you.
The last speaker's card is Hussein Zand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Hussein Zand. I'm a civil engineer. I'm part of the technical team from Mr. Shamber. The issue that he brought up regarding grading plan for the two buildings that they have built at the site, based on what I saw and I observed, they did not move more than 50 cubic yards, and that exempted from grading permit or grading plans. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Ted, you wanna start up down here?
Yeah, I'm still concerned about the ADA access, but I'm sure that if we're gonna, if it's gonna be open, that they're gonna make sure that it is done properly according to standards. The other issue, and I hear this with the restaurant, and I understand what we're saying, and Steve, in our CUP process, we can place in there that no restaurant facility will ever be approved, correct? Even though it's zoned for that?
Yeah, you, you can add a condition that basically limits what kind of food can be served at the project site. You can add a condition that says if they wanna put in a full-service kitchen, that they have to come back to you for modification to the CUP, so yes, you can, however you wanna condition it, you can do that.
Okay, so that, and this is something the Planning Commission addressed too, when they were doing, is that there would be, okay. Thank you. No further, Mr. Mayor.
Kevin?
All right, so I wanna make sure, you know, first off, I wanna say, I'm, I'm really impressed with the civility and the, I was very proud of all of you who live in Norco, the way you spoke. I was really impressed, and I really appreciate it. We don't always have people opposing one another that are clearly good people and civil, and I really appreciate that. So a couple of things. I'm concerned about Philly, but it sounds like there's some room here. So one, we have to make sure no restaurant goes there absolutely never, ever. And just as a sort of exposure, I've actually been to several events at the property, and I've seen, it's always been catered and that kinda thing. One of the things I'd like to see is if you're willing to remove those stumps in a timely manner, that would be really, really good. I mean, let's say, let's put a time limit on three months, six months, something like that? All right, a week? But I'm concerned about Philly, and is there some way, Steve, that we can, it's catching what you have, by the way, so thank you. No parking on this, first off, all right, so on the street going into it, I personally would also like to see that there's absolutely no parking on that street by anybody, I'm sure that's already there, but just, I wanna firm all this stuff up. Well, if it's a business, I think you can condition it as a business, and when I was there, you have plenty of parking, correct? So are you, I'm hearing that we can't condition a street, to not have, it's a private street?
Well, we can, and John will correct me if I'm wrong here, but we can condition, condition the project that the participants have to park on-site. Problem is the enforcement, because it's a private street. So I would throw that out to our city attorney and sheriff's department.
I don't have too much problem with the enforcement of that condition. I would think that the difficulty is that there's another group of people that isn't going to an event there that's visiting somebody who lives on the street.
Oh, no, I, what I meant is that, that we need to, I totally get that somebody who's visiting somebody on the street, they can park there. I'm saying I would like to see some very strict controls by the property owner.
You can condition the CUP that all event parking...
Right, that's what I meant.
...be held on the site. And specifically call out that there's no event parking on North.
Okay. And then, how do we keep them off of Philly? Because I actually went down to Philly, sorry. I shouldn't admit that, but, and I knew better, and I thought, well, okay, I'm going over to look at the place, and I went down the street, and I went, oh, I can't get through there, so I had to go around. I'm a Norco High graduate, I'm challenged, what can I tell you? I, I'm a Norco high graduate, I'm challenged, what can I tell you?
For yourself, I will.
Yeah. Is there some way through signage, through something, that we can protect Philly so that people don't, now, one of the problems we just have to face is people think they're going to Riverside and they buzz right by North and they go into the bluff site. We get that. And one of the things we've talked about is maybe bigger signage to let people know that there's no access or there's no, you know, we can't get out, don't go through here, turn right and sign to go to Riverside, something. Is there something we can do that's not obtrusive in a neighborhood that maybe can help them on Philly?
Signs are only for the ones that do.
Well, I'm a Norco high graduate and I can read. There's three Norco high graduates on the council, so, you know, I'm the, I'm the challenged one.
Unfortunately, the answer to your question is a little more complicated because Philly's a private street.
Right, I get it.
The city doesn't have the ability to put signage on the private street.
Yeah, but leading into it though, that's a public street.
But if it's a public street, we can put signage on the public street saying, you know, no access or this, no through traffic or...
Or some, something to just as much as possible to warn people to try to protect that street, because I totally get where they're coming from.
Access to the farm or...
Uh-oh, I... Well, talk to Gavin Newsom, he's trying to erase all those things, so, um, stumps, emergency response, fire. I personally think that it's an asset to the community. I, I actually like it when somebody does something like this. I probably won't get much of agreement, but I, I actually do not have a problem with as they are bringing these things together, as long as there's a time limit, I don't have a problem with them having some events, but the moment that they don't get something finished, then we say, we're really sorry, but you didn't comply or, or something like that. I don't have a problem with that. I also, because it's such a large, you know, one of the problems with Norco, and it's a great problem, is that some properties can have big buildings on them and some properties can't. And the people, it's always the ones with, the ones that really can't, that want to have the big buildings, but in a situation like this, this is a very unique piece of But that said, uh, I would totally understand. The other thing is it appears to me that a lot of effort's been made to mitigate the noise on the property. I don't live there though, so I'm, I'm hesitant to, to really respond to that. By the way, one of the things you need is air conditioners in that building, just so you know, some big fans or something. I'm trying to address everything the people from Philly talked about, so no restaurant, some way to keep people off their street. I think he's mitigated the noise. We do have noise ordinances within keeping people going to the events, not on the street. And I guess the only thing, and I, and I totally agree that, I think that any time that we put the word insignificant in a report, we just shouldn't use those words. We should just say the impacts, because we're talking people and everybody's different and to say, I can totally relate to why you would think the impact, well, it's not insignificant and that immediately gets people's hackles up. So, I think in the future, we need to refrain from words like that, find something that's a little bit more just generic, do you know what I'm saying, Steve? Rather than the impacts are insignificant and you've got somebody on Philly who's just had 12 cars, including mine, drive down their street trying to find the place. So, um, I, I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time. Again, I am so impressed with the people that, that spoke today, thank you so much. It really, um, the civility was deeply appreciated, so thank you. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Robin?
So, I'm not sure if this is a Steve question or a John question and John's not listening. Um, this, is there any way that we can have the CUP go with the owner of the property versus being carried with the property? So, how do we do that?
That's a condition in the CUP.
So, it's a condition. So, I would request that that is done as well, that the CUP goes with the owner of the property, not with the land. And then, I'll be honest, the only opposition that I received personally as a council member is the noise. And so, I don't know if there's something else beyond the noise ordinance that is enforceable for us, I would, do you have, there's not really anything, right?
Well, I mean, again, I don't know that there's any way of fashioning it, but if there was some way of, uh, increasing the ability on the property to mitigate the noise, that you can do. You know, I'm not suggesting block walls or things, but, but for example, that's, that's how noise is mitigated. A requirement maybe that all amplified, uh, sound be contained within the barn structure. Maybe that's probably what it is anyway, but I don't know that.
Well, it's in condition 19, no sound amplification system provided with projects outside the confines of the multipurpose building. Okay, and then the other question then, and I did highlight this, on number 19, because I feel like some of these conditions were kind of boilerplate in their nature. Um, if you read in the middle of number 19, it says, "In the event of approval of any, um, such system, technical details of the systems like loudspeakers and paging are re, um, subject to review and approval by the planning director designated." So, we're going to be on page five at the bottom. And like when I'm reading that, I'm thinking that's like a CarMax condition or a fast food restaurant condition, um, versus kind of the application that we have going on here. So, I don't know if it would be appropriate on that one to just leave the first part as is and then just say there will be nothing else or strike it out or...
Although, again, I mean, we're kind of imagining things.
Right.
But if you had a wedding outside that there was sound amplification, uh, or, you know, music that was related to that wedding outside that required sound amplification, that should probably should be reviewed and approved by the staff.
But where would that be approved? Because if I'm thinking in my head, I'm going to have a portable speaker system and a microphone and I'm going to put those two small speakers up the day of the event with a single microphone for the couple and the pastor, but that doesn't require approval, correct?
It does, yeah.
For every single event?
Yes.
Enforceable and checked by who?
The, well, if they're going to do, the way the condition is written, if they're going to propose any system outside of the confines of the building, they have to get approval from planning first. And what we're going to require is similar to what we do with several lakes, which obviously has much bigger events. But they have to demonstrate to us the equipment and what, what the sound level's going to be produced and then if needed, what level of mitigation they're going to incorporate to reduce that down.
And in addition, we do have as a measuring standard, the noise ordinance.
Okay.
Did you mean the CUP travels with the owner or with the land?
With the owner.
So, the next owner would have to reapply for everything or...
Yes.
So that we, we're clear now, John, because that is not what we've been told in the past.
Yeah.
To apply this consistently going forward. Is that a state law or simply something Norco can determine?
No, actually, no, actually, not getting to each other. The condition of use from it, not as a matter of state law, but as a matter of case law, runs with the property because it's, it's a use. But it's not, I want to say atypical, but there are other situations in Norco. The, uh, does not, when the property changes hands, the CUP does not continue to be effective.
So, here's my concern is that sell the property and the next person comes in, there's a different council sitting here, and they say, gee, a restaurant sounds like a great idea. And I'm just wondering if, if maybe we should...
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, if that happens, there's nothing you can do to solve that problem. Uh, all it takes is, uh, application to amend the CUP in three votes, no matter whether it runs with the land or whether it's the owner.
Esky democracy. The other thing, Robin, too, is the sound thing. I'm wondering, because it's, for a smaller operation, is there some way that they can, let's say they buy their own sound equipment and they, each time, they don't have to, they could just come in and say, we're using the sound equipment that we've been using and so to sort of streamline that just a little bit so it's not onerous, you know?
Yeah, we could, we could definitely set up a, a system where if, for that kind of situation, if they're using the same equipment that's already been proven to be safe for neighbors to not produce noise levels that would cause a violation with the sheriff's department, we'll just go ahead and let them keep using that. They don't have to...
In addition, apparently that hasn't been an issue to date.
Thanks, Robin, I just wanted to clarify that.
Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. This may seem like it's going to bounce around a little bit, but, uh, let's go to, um, well, first of all, I'd like to thank the applicants. A couple of months ago, I had the pleasure of visiting your facility. It's beautiful. I, I think it's something that is needed in town. And, uh, so I appreciate your time and your explanations. So, what I, I went back to that, and I think this is, Suzanne kind of touched on it a little bit on the findings, that any decision we make has to be based off of the four findings that are presented by staff. And it has been years since we have ever addressed anything in the AE, agricultural estate zoning, um, 18.12. And this is one of the, the problems I had with the planning commission on this at our, our last meeting, but, um, in 181208, uh, one of the intents with this is that, um, related to the restaurant and all these incidental uses, the planning commission shall ensure that the imposition of appropriate conditions, that no interference with the conduct of nearby residential's, residential uses occurs. So, to me, that's kind of a primary driver, that how we should address these seven critical items. So, in no particular order, on, with the traffic on Philly Lane, um, this is just a suggestion, as I also live on a private street and if you drive down it, the first thing you see is a bunch of signs from six of the nastiest people you'll ever want to meet, that basically says, no parking, go away, neighborhood watch, um, we don't like you, we don't want you, okay? So, as a suggestion, I would...
I thought if you take it down and just replace with your name.
Yeah, there you go. As a suggestion, I would also look at some signage that way, you know, for your own private street. But then, Steve, for the facility, where are we with signage that would stop it at the entrance that Kevin should have turned into? How can we help with that?
Well, and the issue again is the private street. The, um, I mean, we could, we could add a condition that every time there's an event, that they, they put like a placard out at California North and says, "The farm access this way" and points them into the, but as, as far as a permanent sign, they have to get permission from everybody that has rights to that street.
Really? They have signage saying, "Farm, arrow, this way"?
Yep.
Okay. Do me a favor, Steve, make sure you write all these down, because that's going to be my last question, is, is for you to repeat all the conditions we've changed or added. So, you would suggest that, and, and we can, at the end, ask the applicant if this is acceptable, is that with any event, let's, let's put some temporary signage out there. Okay. Back on condition number nine, um, with the, that was an earlier question to John about, uh, no events to take place until everything's completed. Kevin, you had brought that up as, as a remedy. What would you think about while this work and all this progress is taking place, that if there are any events scheduled, that they just go to Steve for a special event permit temporarily? Is that doable, Steve?
Yes.
Or is this hard and fast on night? I can go either way on that.
The problem we have is, for instance, if, if, I'll let John jump in, but if they're going to do outdoor events and not use the buildings, I think that would, that would be fine, but I don't think the city should be put in a position of saying, yes, you can use these buildings even though we don't know they're safe.
Yeah. Well, then you get into the problem with the sound, right? Can't use the buildings, it's going to be outside and then you're going to have sound out there.
I mean, I'm, I'm a little more concerned about Steve's prior comment, that essentially we're allowing occupancy of buildings which have not been issued a C of O and have not been inspected.
Okay.
So, I would hope that, uh, the, the first thing which would be done, and it could be that the buildings, uh, really don't take any, I mean, if they were built to our standards and we could prove it, then, uh, getting a C of O should be pretty simple. Uh, if, if they're not, then we have concerns that are legitimate anyway about people occupying them. So, I would think that first on the priority list for the property owner would be coming in with his plans and getting an inspector out there and fixing the building.
Okay. And, and I'm fine with that, so number nine remains. I was just trying to find a solution.
But can I follow up?
Sure.
Can they have events there that are all outdoors?
As long as they're not occupying the buildings, yes.
And there's no sound?
Well, or the sound is, the sound...
I mean, that's what you have in your conditions, that all sound amplification has to be inside.
And except for those which are, that's what we just talked about.
Yeah.
That system which is approved by...
Right. Okay. There you go. Restaurant, can we just, as we said before, can we just work with this and just, in that zone, if you go back to that 18.12, why can't we just make some kind of motion or whatever, in that section, say restaurants are not ancillary uses in a AE zone? At least it takes it out of this situation.
So, you're recommending adding a condition that no permanent kitchen facilities be constructed there without modification of the CUP?
Or, you don't, but in the last part, just...
Just no, okay, all right.
And I'm going to take that based on the applicant's comments that is not interested in a restaurant and all food's going to be brought in, so...
And remember, the additional use from it is, is you're approving a use which is defined as whatever's happening on the property, subject conditions. And the use, since it doesn't involve a restaurant, one of the conditions can easily be that there can't be any permanent, uh, food service structures constructed.
Okay, so go, then go back with the CUP going with the land and the next owner that decides to come back for a restaurant. Where, where do you stop that?
You can't. I mean, is it...
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Are you proposing changing a, a zone change, right?
Yeah.
No, well, it's not a zone change, but it's just...
But I meant a, a piece of the, not a zone, but...
Removing an ancillary use under 181208.
Yeah, that way you solve the whole problem.
But, but you're...
In that AE zone only.
You're going to have to do that by amending the code to... You're going to have to do that by amending the code specifically.
Okay.
I'm not saying that's not necessarily a good idea. But in order to address this problem tonight, that isn't going to happen. I mean, remember, it gets to go through the planning commission, all the hearings, all those fun things. You can't just simply amend it.
So what we can do, though, is in this case only?
Yeah. And maybe there are some circumstances, and I'm making it up, I don't have any idea, but maybe there are some AE property that, that a restaurant does appropriate use.
You know what I love, John? Those two people right there have been friends of mine for 30 years. They're both attorneys. And you, as an attorney, say, you know, "You just make some stuff up and move on." So thanks for the advice.
You know, and...
That, no.
And Craig, if I could, I think John's got a point. And this comes back to the fact that this is an AE zone, and one of the uses is the equestrian event center.
Right.
Which, if you thought about it, and they made it a private equestrian event center, and say it was a private club, they could actually, under this rule, be able to put a restaurant in there to serve their club members. And that would be a legitimate approved use in that, in this zone.
And remember...
That's why we have to be careful of it for prior owners, so...
And everything comes back to you under any circumstances. Or no restaurant, no permanent food service facility is a matter of right. It comes back to a city council that says, "Well, no, the impact is too great on this property. You can't do it, just like you are tonight."
Okay. So where we are right now is, a restaurant's not going to be allowed in this conditional use permit.
Correct.
Something for the future, as Kevin brought up, what's going to happen in five years, you know, or two years.
Yeah. I mean, no, that's right. Unfortunately, there's not much we can do about that, that if, there's nothing to preclude, you know, day after tomorrow, an applicant coming in and asking for modifications to the CUP and goes through the same process again. Maybe with a different outcome, but, you know, that's what government's about.
Yep. Due process, right? Okay, so we've talked about North Street signage, parking on site, that'll be condition. Steve, correct, all parking on site. Chief, there was a few comments made, just basically over with emergency response and different scenarios. Do you have any comments, anything to address emergency response in the various situations that the residents commented about?
I share the concern with the tree stumps that are going to be mitigated. That is the choke point, that is my concern. I think I share that with Sandy, as well as Chief Ike. Those are going to be mitigated. As far as that road surface and response into there, once that's mitigated, I have no concerns.
Last one I have is a comment by the one speaker in the applicant is, just walked away from me, precise grading plan, Chad. What is your...
27. Yeah, so the city engineer has looked at this extensively and discussed it a number of times, and he believes it's necessary and reasonable for the project, considering all the work that's been done on the property.
Okay, so the other engineer that stated that it was 50 yards or less of material?
Again, we're going to disagree with that. On principle, it's more.
Okay.
But again, we've looked at it, we've considered sides of the buildings, the foundations required, the footings. We just believe it's well more than the 50 cubic yards, and we think it's more than reasonable to request a precise grading plan.
Okay, and then you also list on your precise grading plan paving? Will prepare an onsite precise grading, comma, paving? There is no paving?
And drainage plan. Right. And again, that's part of that they're going to look at, determine the flow of the water because of the buildings, how they've impacted, they're going to look at that. And whatever paving they're looking to do, it's not required to do it any specific amount. It's just what ends up being determined, related to any type of ADA issues or required, we want that identified in the precise grading plan.
Okay.
But at this time, again, we have already understood that there's not a plan to pave parking lot. There's more plan, U D G, or aggregate, et cetera. So it's just, it's a catch-all in that process when it develops.
If there's no paving, it's...
Yeah, it's just, it's not required. We just, it's a catch-all for when you do precise grading plan, you look for those elements.
Okay.
And you document why they're not necessary.
So Councilman Hoffman brought up about ADA access and all of that, that those percentages from wherever the required parking, your ADA path of travel on this precise grading plan, then you will also be checking those percentages and the path of travel?
Correct. And which, again, the requirements will be determined by the building department and will be included in the precise grading plan. So we'd first need to get determined how many and the size of the ADA parking lots, spots, and the pathway to each of those respective buildings, so that they're shown in that precise grading plan.
Path of travel is going to be you, then?
Yes.
Very building.
Right. And if you'll let me jump in on that, the applicant spoke and stated that, Commission Member Acevedo stated that gravel is an ADA path of travel. And the comment that came back, because we actually had this plan reviewed by our consulting plan-checking company, Wildan, it wasn't done in-house, we sent it out to them, they did not put in that it had to be paved. So whatever's required per the building code, that's what we're going to require. But right now, the path of travel does not have to be paved, the way it is right now.
And I understand that, but you have to have a path of travel?
Yes.
For your ADA access?
Yep.
So your recommendation is there's no modification to that, but condition 28?
Correct. Okay, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, John, Greg had brought up about, Kevin, about allowing the use, allowing events going on over there while they're doing the work to get in compliance. And you said it'd be okay if they used the buildings. You talking about using the building before they got the fire sprinklers in there?
No, I didn't, no, I said, I think the opposite of that. Steve asked whether or not they could hold events outside. That's a non-issue.
Yeah, outside.
Utilization of the building, since we, before they're inspected and make sure they're code compliant, does represent a little bit of a problem. We don't have any liability, but frankly, the property owner has significant liability.
Right, without the sprinklers in there and a big crowd and everything.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know about sprinklers or any of that stuff, but it's got to meet the code.
Is that what you were, you guys were talking about Sandy, that those buildings had to be sprinkled?
Yes, the large barn does, yes.
Okay.
Not the restrooms.
All right. All right, another one for you, since the chief's not answering questions tonight. You're talking about the weight of the fire engine?
Yes.
Okay, so when you get to the gate to gentlemen's property, they come in on that driveway, that the driveway's heavy enough to hold up the fire truck?
I would say it should be. I don't know anything about the design of the driveway, because it was installed when they built the larger home.
Right.
But I would assume that they would have built that to the standards.
And I didn't look the other day, Tim, does that driveway go all the way around your house where the truck can just make a circle and get out?
We actually have three entrances. Our department has been there the past two or three years. I also want to say one thing about, you have three gates, have a parking monitor out. I guess more than ours, the car you're served talking to and two more, wave them to another gate and have another guy check them off, because I don't... And you have traffic going both ways all the time, because a lot of people come in and they drop off on Ubers. Comes all the way into the van. Come to right and the gate on the left, go all the way around, the whole property, and that's all you do.
And that's on the south side of the property there, where you come in your gate. I know where your parking lot is, but they can come around the house and go back out that way. All right, and you do have somebody, you said, checking names off so that you don't get it crashed and some crazy come in there and cause a bunch of problems.
We also have them out there to keep the traffic out.
Okay, and Sonia still here? Question for you. Your customers there at the stable, they all park on your property right in that little parking lot to the left there? It's not blocked the street and everything? Okay, thank you. That's all I have, folks. Anybody else got any more? Okay, Kevin?
So the grading plan, the fear is that he's going to end up having to put in drains and all kinds of stuff. Is that possible? Is that a realistic...
Well, yeah, the engineering plan will determine, because he's obligated to determine and identify the flow of water that's coming onto the property. He has a history of the water runs down the road and runs through his property. Normally goes to, I think mainly to the west of that area. But again, because of the buildings that are there, your, part of your precise grading plan is to identify the flow of water through that area. So it doesn't mean he's going to have drainage in there required. It really depends on what the engineer determines of what flows going that way, how much of a change in pitch and any elevations have occurred, et cetera. Again, you're unfortunately reverse engineering this, because it wasn't done properly.
Yeah, I guess that's my question, is that, and just to be devil's advocate, how would we know that more than 50 cubic yards of dirt had been moved if it was already done before we got there?
Well, again, we're confident of, again, the size of the buildings and the footings that are required, that it's more than 50 cubic yards. And again, we think it's more than reasonable for the size of the project than what's been done, that a precise grading plan is relevant. It would be required if this was coming to us from the very beginning, we would require this. So it's just only fair, as far as a project. Another applicant came in, choosing to do the same project, now that this is something that might be considered in the future for other properties, we would require this requirement for them, because that's how we want to look at the projects.
When does that kick in? What size building does that kick in, a precise grading plan?
I'm not sure as far as the size, it's usually mainly off of how much material you're moving.
Thanks.
I appreciate that. Mr. Dominic was here, he can more eloquently explain why they've determined this is required.
Well, I mean, as you know, I kind of don't always trust when they talk about cubic feet being moved. I get a little kind of, a little nervous about that stuff.
Mr. Merrick, by the way, Steve, on that property, when it was originally built, was there a grading plan for that original house? For the original structures, or had any somewhere?
Well, they had to do a pad certification for the house before they could build it. If they, I don't know if they were required to do a grading plan.
And it was built when?
I think in, it's been there for a while. Yeah, I just, it is.
I know, it's a lottery house, but it's still the...
I don't remember the year.
But I don't think it's over 20 years old.
No, no.
So what you're saying is, is that the grading plans and we're basing this assumption of this need for grading, unless our home was less than 20 years old. And I don't think that that property has changed that much in 20 years, seeing that, the actual grade. Yes, he did build a house, the extra barn in there and things like that. So somewhere along the line, there is a plan for that original structure, and grades were done and set. So I, we can sit here and argue 50 yards got moved or not, but your original plan should have that in there somewhere, that that was done, and there was a plan set up when that original property was done. And I don't know why we're going to argue on this when there should be plans somewhere that need to be checked.
You're talking about two, you're talking about totally different structures. You're talking about the house versus the buildings. Buildings are newly constructed, and that's required to do it every time, when you meet certain thresholds. So you're not talking apples and apples. So if there was, which I don't know if there is or not, a grading plan that was required for the house, we'd have to look it up. It's a different condition when you're building additional new buildings on that same lot, because the area in question may or may not have been graded. But I don't know. Again, we're just simply looking at it as what was constructed and what was done.
If that was been, if that would have been a horse barn there, I guarantee you, we still wouldn't see a grading permit based upon that, because most people don't. And that would have been an M D barn put in there, he wouldn't have been accessing for a grading permit, because he don't. All the years I'm planning, I didn't see one. And we approved a lot of buildings and a lot of structures in the area without grading permits that were put on properties. And the first thing I always asked them was, "Where does the water go?" And those are things that were done for several years. So, you know, I understand how we apply because of M P D S and all that. It's just one of those things that how much, you know, we're arbitrarily saying he moved 50 yards, and we don't know. And that's what I'm trying to get at, is why we're forcing this grading thing on everyone. So, that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Greg?
So Ted, how about something like this, that staff look at, going, go back to the newest house, the new structure that was permitted, that was built, there should be a grading plan with that. I'm making that assumption. If there is, you can, you can take all those points and try to back into a determination on those other structures, how much grading was done. I mean, you would have those elevations.
And again, I'm not opposed to, we've used it on other projects, how to creatively develop the precise grading plan, but I would put that obligation on the applicant to determine that, not staff.
Okay.
So if he develops something, and again, it's an idea, because we've done it on other properties, including the more recent one with the church, is we used part of their site plan to show grades and elevations, to create a grading plan, because they didn't originally do one. So again, we staff as wise, we will look and consider ideas of how to get us what we're looking for, in a manner that we think is reasonable and fair. So if there's additional or existing information that could be used and to develop that grading plan, we will certainly consider it, and we always have.
All right, how about this? Ted, if you're in agreement, that the condition stands right now, and the applicant's engineer can go to the city or go to the applicant, find those plans that are from the permitted house, and make his civil engineering determination and make, let him make the case that 50 yards weren't with moved?
Except.
Okay? If he can prove that, based off permitted information, that would be acceptable, would
Staff is of the opinion that the grading, precise grading plan is required because of the conditions on the site. I think it's reasonable to do what you originally suggested was, if there are elements on the property that allow him to develop a precise grading plan using existing information, I think that's fair and reasonable, and we do that. I think in regards to the engineer trying to prove that something wasn't there...
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying, let them make the case, though.
Yeah, I just think, again, we've already had the discussion
Okay.
between the chambers and ourselves, and we disagree. So I don't see that changing. I think the compromise is, again, is maybe using existing material that makes it easier and cheaper to develop the precise grading plan and show that all those, again, the flows, et cetera, that we need for that, that plan.
All right.
I go back to the fact that there was a plan there, and we just have to see how much it was changed.
Right. But that's not a staff function, or I'm saying...
No, and if the applicant can do that, that's fine. I mean, that's, he should be doing that to research it, like anybody else.
Right. And again, the issue for me is, the grading plan could have been just for the house. It's not for all the other areas where the accessory buildings have now existing. So, and that's what we're focused on. We're not talking about a grading plan for the house.
Correct.
It's for all these buildings.
Well, we won't know until we pull the... Well, we won't know until we pull the, pulled about.
How many square feet is that one building, Greg? How many square feet is the sort of barn building?
Two thousand square feet, I think.
I just rolled the plans back up. So, my other item, Steve, his item number...
Before you leave that item, maybe one of the things you can do, given the circumstances, is if the staff and applicant can't work it out, that he has the ability to come back to you and talk about it.
Yeah. I don't know what good that would do. I would say that that condition stands until you can prove otherwise. And I think that's a staff function and an engineering function. That shouldn't come back to a council. That's my personal opinion. Number three, noise and operational hours. So, I think we've addressed noise and conditions, operational hours. We have an end date, but we have not come up with a start time when activities can begin. And that was one of the questions that, first page of your staff report, Steve. That was a concern of the planning commission, that you had a, everything's over at 10 o'clock. When do things start? So, I think we have to come up with a answer on that.
There's no restriction on when events could begin.
Right, it's the last condition. So, if you wanna modify it, we'll modify condition 63.
Okay, then my question is, modify it to what? What's staff's recommendation for a time to start?
Don't ask my neighbors.
What did the neighbors say? Just take a vote? So, did you wanna do or...
You might wanna ask.
Our current ordinance, not the noise ordinance, but our current activity ordinance for construction is at 7:00 a.m. in the morning.
During the week.
During the week, and so we have to look at a weekend time. And, you know, even at Ingalls, it's between 7:00 and 8:00. Most start at 8:00 o'clock. You can put 8:00 o'clock on the weekend and then you would probably be pretty consistent with what goes on up at the public arena. But our construction activity is 7:00 a.m. on Monday through Friday or even Saturday.
So, what, Ted, like something like 8:00 for equestrian activities? And what other activities?
I think you'd wanna just, if we get too specific on this, it's gonna get confusing.
I know.
So, the easiest thing is you hit the happy medium and just say...
8:00 a.m.?
8:00 a.m.
Because they still have to get a permit for the noise anyway, on the outside.
If it's outside, okay.
And they're saying it's equestrian events and maybe there's an early wedding or something that they'd have to have a microphone of some kind.
So, try to finish up. Steve, will you give a list now of all the conditions that have been added, changed, modified, or deleted?
Okay, so the first one is condition 13. We're taking out that second clause. This is in regards to the maintaining landscaping. They don't have to maintain right-of-way landscaping. And then, I don't know if the intent was to add a condition that the CUP runs with the owner or stays with the land.
The normal state of the law is that the CUP runs with the land. And if FEED decides, if it's passing, well, just suggests that he wants to sell the business, that that business is subject to the same conditions. So, as long as you're happy with the conditions and the existing conditional use permit, it shouldn't really make much difference who's...
Yeah, so then if we wanna like, make sure there's no restaurant there ever, it needs to run with the land.
Right.
Okay.
And then if he violates, then you can revoke a CUP and he's out of business.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Some future guy.
Okay, no parking on north by any of the participants in events. No restaurant or kitchen facility, permanent. No permanent restaurant or kitchen facility. Temporary directional signs prior to events to direct people at north in California to turn left instead of go straight. 28 is not changing. Condition number 63 will add the provision that events don't start before 8:00 a.m.
Stump. Stump.
The owner of the tree said she's gonna do it, but I don't know that we can add a condition on this.
And then the kitchen...
I mean, you, well, to the extent that the owner of this site has an interest in the private street, I suppose that we can condition the removal of the stumps on...
I think he'll do it, but I just would feel better if they condition it. And then the kitchen, can they have a sink to wash dishes and stuff? A kitchen is, can they have a refrigerator?
They can have a refrigerator and a sink. They just can't have a, outside of like warming plates and stuff. They can't have a stove and oven and that sort of thing.
Okay, Steve, so let me throw something at you. Tim talked about having his barbecues. Does that fall under that?
No.
Okay. All right, just trying to keep this up board.
So, Steve, when you just mentioned that about kitchen, what you can have and what you can't, then go back, it's basically, yeah, you can have a sink and a stove.
No sink and a refrigerator.
And a refrigerator.
Right.
Why do we require a grease interceptor then?
For washing dishes.
Okay. I don't agree with that, though. I mean...
That's why it's in there, so...
Can you have a dishwasher?
No.
Have to do a collector on the bottom.
We, we would treat it similar to how we look at a, for instance, like a garage. You can have, people can have dishwashers in their garage. They can have washing machines in their garage. So, we would tell them if they wanted a dishwasher, they could do that, but they need a grease...
But we wouldn't require them to have a grease interceptor.
But they do need a grease interceptor.
Is this more of a health, I don't really support it, but is that more of a health department requirement? Or, I don't wanna box us into it, but...
It's more of a sewer.
It's, again, it's more of a default of building code as far as when there's food on site that default to grease interceptor. So, we're just taking it for its face value. There's food, there's food there. Food is cleaned up and washed off. You get grease. It's, whether it's overkill, yeah, you're probably considering the operation, but it's just more of the what-ifs. What if the next person is doing something totally different?
And where is that in the code?
I'd have to look it up. Again, I'm not, we just traditionally have done...
Where does that information come from?
Come from?
Yeah.
Building code, health code, again, as far as...
Was that from Will Dan?
We occasionally talk to Will Dan regarding their recommendation regarding size. We're concerned about the type of operation, whether it's significant, if it's large enough or not. The default is at 750 and, you know, whether there's anything smaller that we can get away with and versus doing an, versus, that's when you really get into an internal grease catch device that you put in your plumbing to kinda grab it, and that's what you clean. I forget, I'm trying to remember the right terminology. But there are, there are businesses where they have an internal grease interceptor, a box, that they maintain internally to keep the catch.
I know what they are.
Right.
That's why I'm disagreeing. So, my recommendation is that, that staff look to see where that's in the code, where that's required, because I think for this operation, it shouldn't be required if they're just bringing in food.
Yeah, I mean, if they're just throwing it away and they're not washing dishes and or pouring anything down the sink and guard down the garbage disposal, yeah, I mean, you can make a condition, basically, it already has to be thrown away. And then it would be a non-issue.
So, that's my recommendation, is you can let it stand. But I'd like, I'd like to know where that is in the code that's telling you it's required.
Well, again, it's...
But I think this is more boilerplate.
Yeah, well, again, it's a determination by the department based off the activity of what's necessary. Could we, do we have the discretion to not require it? Yes, absolutely. And we justify it later on if an issue occurred of why we didn't do it. So, again, I don't have any heartburn if it's not put in. I would still recommend there should be some sort of internal catch basin if there's gonna be sink and washing of dishes, etc., just to help, say, we had some measure of, and then it's really just them maintaining it. Should it start to back up or get any grease buildup, it's on them. They'll see it occur and have it back up and they'll know it's right there inside their building.
I'm just curious where in the plumbing code that's gonna be because he's gonna have to have floor drains at it. I think once building gets done with all this, that we'll have a better understanding.
Right.
That's just my two cents.
Chad, you said something about throwing away, and you know the recycle business better than I do. Didn't the state come up with a new thing to get rid of grease on with trash? They weren't supposed to do it anymore?
Well, one of the requirements that'll be on the property, because it is, does have food on it, is they're now gonna have to have organics waste containers for all that food to go into there to be picked up by waste management. So, any organics are required to be disposed of now, so...
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying. You mentioned trash and I just said, it's not as easy because of the rules that environmentalists propose.
Yeah, we're currently issuing letters to all the businesses. We've done inspections and informing them if they don't already have organic service, that they must get it or risk daily fines. So, one of the issues in, as this property is, if it's determined to continue, is they will have to get organics containers for all the food that they're throwing away. And then that has to be picked up by waste management. It cannot go in the regular trash. So, that'll be part of that process to educate them and understand. And they can determine whether or not they just need a 165-gallon cart and it just gets picked up once a week or something larger. It really depends on how much food is being disposed of on the property.
Yep, that's what it is. I knew there was. And to answer Councilman Newton's thing about the grease traps, City of L.A. or the County of L.A., one of, I think it's the city, they are enforcing that grease traps on their areas, especially on their, the new law that allows kitchens and homes to, for private food because it's found, they found it was ruining their sewer service, their sewer lines because of all the buildup and they're getting them plugged up. So, that was one of the reasons why the degreaser situation, it's increasing because of they're permitting these in-home kitchens for preparation of foods. They created a problem, now they have to fix it.
Again, I'm not as concerned with this particular operation.
No, I'm not either, but...
Because it's not a daily activity where you normally get most of the restaurants. It's just more of a default when we get, when we get a application for a business or even a retro, even a new owner on a normal commercial restaurant and they don't have a grease interceptor, we make them put one in. And it just fell into, for any better purposes, kinda like boilerplate, commercial business, food's being prepped, gotta put a grease interceptor in. But it doesn't mean we can't customize it to say, you know what, based off what you're not gonna do there now and a better understanding, that you can just do a, if you even have to, because if you're not doing any floor drains or anything else, it may not be required at all. But we need to see what they're ultimately asking to get permitted to determine what's gonna be required.
So, I guess my question would be, how do we determine, how to condition it if we don't know? Because like my general perception would be on condition number 33 to just strike that last sentence.
I would condition it to say that it's required until determined by the building department and engineering that it's not necessary because of the activities approved that are gonna be conducted on site. Because then it gives us the flexibility, which Councilman Newton was talking about, is to evaluate it and make that determination. And again, understanding the council's concerns about it, obviously, we're not gonna be aloof about making a decision. We're gonna make sure that we can defend of why it's necessary. And it gives us the option to maybe look at other alternatives that are less intrusive.
Okay.
Okay, folks, what's your pleasure? Do I hear a motion of some sort?
Make a motion with all of the contingencies and the contingencies contained here with those changes, that we approve this.
Second.
Under discussion. John, do we have to have any mention in this motion of, that we're overturning the action of the planning commission?
Well, you are, de facto, because you're adopting the resolution approving... But, but yes, it's probably appropriate to indicate that you're overturning the planning commission decision and approving the conditional use permit as amended.
So, I amend my motion that we are overturning the planning commission and we're approving the CUP with the conditions contained therein and then also contained within this document with the changes we've already agreed to. You've already read the list. I'm assuming you have the list. Is that good, John?
Under discussion. Just real quick, I wanna make one clarification on the event signage. Keeping in mind that the signage should be placed on the private property road and not in the public right-of-way because that's a designated trail and requires an accrochement permit.
Then I will amend to make sure that the signage has to be on the private property on the street. And anything else?
And what that means kinda de facto is if the owners of the private street, Philly Lane, don't want it, then things say no.
It's not Philly Lane.
No, not Philly.
They're getting their own signage, John.
We're all coming to your street, North.
I'm talking about the directional signage.
Probably very much in favor. You guys go this way, don't come down.
Oh, that's good to know. Okay, so anyway, that's the motion and I'm sticking to it.
Did we have a second?
Under discussion.
Under discussion.
Tim, you're sitting here as the applicant. Before we go any further, make a vote. Are you agree to that, these conditions? Okay, just wanna make sure before we go through this. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you got all that?
Let's please vote. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, one and all. Thank you, folks, for coming and speaking. And everybody remaining civil tonight, that was very good. Now I gotta find my agenda again. We have, Kevin's. Yeah, Kevin, bring your deal up.
So, as those of, we were at the League of Cities and I think I sent it all to you, but it appears that SB 50 is coming by... you, but it appears that SB 50 is coming back. It was, had sort of a two-year layoff. And Senator Roth is a co-author of it. And so it would be what I'm looking for, I talked to Alty today, who's Senator Roth's, because I sent an email to Tyler, and I wanted to find out, was he really doing this? And I, I said, you know, this is pretty unpopular. And Alty's caught me today at the Chamber of Commerce meeting and said he would really like the council, if they have a mind to, to send a letter to his boss and state that we really object to this, and asking, you know, basically what it's about is they're stripping us of local control. And whether it would affect us or not affect us, I think we need to look at it, but, but it's, I mean, I know for a fact, like I said, I'm pretty certain Eastville's going to come out against it, Yerupa Valley is, Corona, there's, there's going to try to be movement over there. And the League of Cities, if you got the thing that Aaron sent, we have to really watch this bill and have our own senator. So I think it needs to be strongly worded, and, you know, say, why are you doing this? This is something we are totally opposed to, and the League of Cities is opposed to it also, unless it's heavily amended. And that's the proposal I'm making, that we send a, a letter. And I would like it to be a letter that's signed by all of us, not a letter just by the city manager, but they see all five signatures on that letter.
Do we have, do we have a second on that?
Okay.
Since we did agendaize this, I don't mind doing it, I just, there is Aaron Sassy from the League, did send us a certain talking points on it, about the League, and I don't know how many of you read that, and Andy, if you read-
Yeah, I sent it to everybody.
Okay, and it just, it's, for the, for the audience view, the, the talking points of this thing, just so we're all in the same page, is that despite recent amendments to the city, blah, blah town, unfortunately, we must remain opposed to SB 50 unless it's further amended. The City of Norco is pleased to see, and this is, I'm just reading this, throwing name in, is pleased to see that recent amendments attempt to create an alternative planning process for the jurisdictions to develop a local flexibility plan. Unfortunately, we can't evaluate whether the local flexibility plan is a viable alternative, because amendments do not clearly identify the elements of the plan. Additionally, it is unclear why some cities should be treated differently, just because they happen to have a population less than 50,000, and are also in a county with a population of less than 600,000. It would be, which they're exempt from it, if you didn't know. It would be much more appropriate to consider the full range of community characteristics when determining which areas of the state SB 50 should apply. By allowing developers to override the state-approved housing plans, SB 50 seriously calls the question, the need for cities to develop these community-based plans, and the justification for spending millions of state and local funds on planning process. Why would the legislature, why would the legislature pass a bill and encourage developers to defy state-approved housing plans and essentially waste millions of taxpayer dollars? By not defining the job-rich areas in the statute, there's also, there's no way of knowing if, if SB 50 would be actually accomplished in its stated goals. It's hard to understand why the legislature would want the executive branch to, to define the essential terms that have a broad implication for how SB 50 would be implemented. I would make sure that we, when we do address this, is that we include the fact that it takes away our rights as a charter city to determine what we plan, our planning for us, as, as outlined by our charter for the minimum half-acre lots and the rule of animal keeping. That would just be my added point of it.
Make sure we personalize, though, it's to Senator Roth, our senator, so.
Okay, we had a motion and a second.
Councilmember Huffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bash?
Yes.
Mayor Hanna?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton? Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, we have, uh, City Council, City Manager, Staff, Communication. We'll start with John.
Nope.
Robin?
No.
Greg?
Yes.
Broke the chain.
Chad, I'm going to give you the credit, and it's a compliment, so hang on to your chair.
Record this, record it.
I'm giving you the credit. Sixth Street, in front of the grocery outlet, construction project that's going on, thank you for making them tear out the asphalt temp patches, where I lost a filling, and make them, that you made them go back with trench plate in, in all their ditches across the street. I want to let you know I noticed that, and there were multiple complaints. You get a gold star momentarily, so.
Dana?
Nothing to report, sir.
Mark? Chad? Steve?
Sir.
Lizette? Chief, you can talk now. Okay, Lieutenant? Ted?
Chad, this is your night. You got kudos from the CRC, you got another gold star. They appreciate you trimming the trees, the rapid response you did across in there to help curtail the illegal activity, and, and the people are hanging out around the prisons. So keeping those trees, I think that really helped them out, so they appreciate that. On another note, and I think, and Andy, when do we plan to redo our mid, our mid-year budget? Soon, sometime?
Yes, soon, the mid-year budget review will be coming to you, I believe, on February, second meeting in February.
Okay. One of the things in, when you do your mid-year budget, if we could look at the possibility of increasing law enforcement staff, just to, to see what we have, the options we have for that, to see where we're at, with, from Lizette's people and yourselves, to see where we're at financially to do that. Just take a look. Thank you.
Kevin?
Really quickly, who's in charge of Kelly's idea to put the stuff on the trails? Who? That was amazing, I'll tell you. I've gotten probably 15 compliments, people talking about how the, how your measure R funds at work. And that is fantastic. We don't get a lot of compliments like that, and I understand Kelly designed it, so be sure to give a shout-out to her. Thank you.
[inaudible][1766.32]